I see Chavvy on Zoom and I see Crossco on Zoom and Peralas, they just didn't. None of them answered, but they're all there.
Okay, we may have some audio problems. You want to give it another shot, just for those council members?
Jimenez? Peralas? Okay, I'm gonna text them and see if they can hear us. Okay, Jimenez? Peralas? Okay, thank you. Crossco? Arenas? Jones? Okay, it looks like we've got everybody.
Okay, I just want to confirm we've got clear audio because obviously they weren't catching us the first time around.
Yeah, they just said they fixed it.
It's all fixed. Alright, thanks guys. Appreciate it. Okay, if you're able to stand, please join us for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance? The United States of America. To the Republic of America. Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Azariah Cole Shepherd, who is San Jose State... I'm gonna get the title wrong there, Azariah, so you can correct me. The head of the Campus Committee of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I think Councilmember Peralas will tell us some more.
Azariah Cole Shepherd to do our invocation today. Azariah is the 2016 Oakland Youth Poet Laureate, and she has performed nationwide, taught at multiple institutions of higher learning, including various high schools, Stanford University, and many more. In 2017, she received a resolution from the City of Oakland for her artistic contributions to the city and her commitment to social change in the communities that she has occupied. She is a senior at San Jose State University and is slated to be the first Black woman graduate from the institution with an electrical engineering degree in over 10 years. Her research emphasis is in implicit bias and racism in AI. She spends her free time mentoring youth, volunteering, modeling, learning from elders in her community, and organizing. It is my pleasure to introduce Azariah Cole Shepherd to share a personal piece with us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Azariah Cole Shepherd. I would like to start by thanking Councilmember Peralas, the mayor, and the entire city council for having me today. Tonight I'll be reciting a poem for you. Who am I? I am Azariah. An articulate armoire of arduous bouts align myself with blackness bold and benbroken, but bareage to better the burdens of others been baptized in the name of God and the revolution. I birth poems on battlefields. Call this the cavalry, the coming of Christ is near. I am life and light in the coroner's office. Coronavirus made me cathartic, cabin fever but can't be defeated. I am defying depression. My dystopian reality doesn't define my devotion. I don't deviate from my desire to deconstruct the demagogues or racial dichotomies of the dummy named Donald. Every day I am existing extraordinarily. Eloquent, elevating melanin, eagerly explaining myself and exposing existential crises exacerbating our existing exhaustion. We've been extorted and exported. I fulfill when fellowshipping with faithful freedom fighters. Fearful when fathers don't father their kids, but I follow plenty that do. I am growing and glowing. Gathering my golden gadgets, the gathering's gonna be gargantuan when we get healed. Helping myself by helping humans. My health is important, but I'm just now learning to prioritize self. I am healing, inside and out. I am imaginative. Intrigued with inanimate things, introverted and intelligent. I am judging the judges and their juxtaposition to justice. I am juggling just about everything and trying to find joy in it. I am keen on things. Knife-like by nature but kind and kinetic. Knitting myself into knowledge, know they killing kids. Nick kills me to know that kleptomoniacal killers love lifting us from our lands. I am love and loved. A libation-pouring learner, I am logistically leaping for liberation, leaning on litigators and libertarians. I am making a monumental mark while mirroring my mama. Marvelously made, making my way through metamorphosis. Watch this monarch manifest magnificence. People tend to mimic my mnemonics. Never neglecting needs of others, need to find new meaning to old definitions. I'm not over nary a murder. Nooses and Negroes in newspapers I've opened. I am open and optimistic, overly apologetic, overcoming. I am opacity and darkness, opulent and cultural pride. I am poetic fanatic analyst perpetually proving a point. I got a point to make, I am poised. Can't afford to quit or quiet the base in my voice. I ask questions and demand answers. Quenching thirst on quest to the quarry. Words heavy as boulders, develop quadriads with queens who require more. I require more and request nothing. Really find solace in reproach of another or a brother. I take full responsibility for the rhythm my words produce. I am still struggling to survive while serving, though I've been saved. Spitting is an old addiction I am slipping back into, sliding my tongue past my teeth to speak with silence. I am sister, sibling, singer, soldier, living sacrifice. I am taking time to travel through tribulations and test so that I can testify in life's trials. I am talking, teaching, troublemaking, testimony. I am unique, utterly unforgiving at times and unapologetically vocal. My verbiage and vernacular vexes the very bodies who vex me. I am whom God strengthens in the valley by definition. What a word. I work hard as a woman even when it feels wasted. I'm washing my hands of your opinions of me. I am xenial with my people. Extreme to some, but you cannot Xerox me. When this poem was written, I was XXI or 21. I am youthful. Yelling to acquire peace and quiet, you are my reflection. And I am yours truly. Azariah, Danae, but my friends just call me Zee.
Thank you, Azariah, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Azariah, for sharing your gift. All right, we have several ceremonial items. First, Councilmember Sparza will join me at the podium. We're gonna recognize and commend Esther Mota for her more than a quarter century of outstanding service to the community and the city of San Jose. Welcome, Esther.
It's on. Okay, and I think we have the police chief here and our police family here, if any PD of the PD family would like to join us. Are we doing it up here in front of the podiums? Oh, I'm so sorry, wherever you...
Wherever you are.
Okay, up to you. Maybe let's put it in the back, because there's lots... There's more people. Yeah, there's more room. Yeah, okay.
Well, all fit. Somebody needs to scooch.
You can see there's a lot of fans for this one. So, before we get to the speeches, I just want to say a few words. We're honored today to present this commendation to Esther Mota, who retired last month after an amazing 26-year career with the city of San Jose. Esther began her career at the city with the Clean Slate Program in 1995, which is an amazing program. I urge people to learn all about it, before becoming one of the first community coordinators for the Save School Campus Initiative. Esther was instrumental in developing many of the city's youth intervention programs and mayor's gang prevention task force initiatives. She played a critical role in elevating the work of the mayor's gang prevention task force into a national model for youth intervention and violence prevention. And her colleagues describe her as the heart and soul of the youth intervention team. All of her work has been guided by the underlying belief that all youth can succeed, including those who may have made some bad decisions earlier in their lives. After nearly 20 years with our Parks and Rec Department, Esther transitioned from her role overseeing all the gang task force youth intervention programs and joined the police department as the supervisor of the crime prevention unit. In this role, she oversaw the city's Neighborhood Watch Program and numerous other programs to make our communities and our neighborhoods comfortable and safer for our residents. And because of Esther's hard work and dedication, countless San Jose youth are out of gangs and on a much better path in their lives. Our neighborhoods and our communities are safer and better prepared to address issues of crime together. And as a grateful city, we thank Esther for her 26 years of service. And before we give the speeches, we have a little short video celebrating her retirement. So, we're gonna make her watch it really quick.
Can't express my gratitude and thankfulness for everything you've done. Just I mentioned you were at PRNS, even Joe and others. I'm back at PRNS today because we're telling everyone, you guys laid the foundation for building trust and dignity at PRNS and am now here as supervisor of crime prevention.
I see you as the leadership of this organization and in those small touches that we think sometimes maybe aren't as meaningful or meaningless, you know, actually have huge meaning.
If it wasn't for you leading this group and the group of people you have, this department would... And the community relationships would not be nearly where they are right now.
You've been the go-to person for so many people. You've been that point person, you know, folks will never forget. So, thank you for your commitment.
So, we'd like to honor you, this plaque that we created for you. And just so everyone knows, I'll read it out loud. It's with our greatest appreciation, we honor you, Esther Mota. Throughout your many years of service, you have been not only a coworker and mentor, but a friend to many. You have set an example to be followed in the future and cherished by those of us that were fortunate enough to have experienced it for ourselves. Congratulations on your over 26 years with the city. So, congratulations.
I know that everybody here, the community is definitely, you know, first for all of you. And I'm just so proud to be associated with all of you. So, I just wanted to, you know, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We don't have cake today. And I think the police chief Mata would like to say.
Thank you, council member. Everything that Councilmember Sparza had said, can't put into words, but thank you. We're gonna miss you, as you can see, everyone here. And I wish you the best in your future. Thank you for everything you did for us.
Thank you very much, council member. Again, I know how much passion and how much hard work you do in the community. And so, it's very... I'm very humbled that this recognition is coming from you. And then, of course, I've known our mayor for a while too, so thank you so much as well. I also want to, you know, really acknowledge my family who are out there. And again, if it wasn't for them, you know, allowing me to work weekends and work nights over the years and take telephone calls, whether if it was 2:00 in the morning after, you know, a shooting had taken place or just staff needing that support, I just really want to thank them again for their support. And I also have some family that are actually via Zoom that are in... And I also have some family that are actually via Zoom that are in the Central Valley. And I want to thank them for, for the emotional support. And so thank you so much. I also have some peers, of course, as you see, I'm very fortunate that, you know, I have the support of my coworkers. And, but I also have some peers that are up here in the audience and from Parks and Rec and also now from the city manager's office. I mean, I'm so proud of all of you. You know that we can't do this work without working with one another, you know? And so thank you so much for coming out here. And then also too, I have some friends that are on Zoom that they told me. So you're there too. And I also just really quickly, I just want to also acknowledge my coworkers who are not here, from the county, from the school, from CBOs, from faith-based organizations, community advocates, community organizers, you know, I just realized, we just, we, all of us, you know, just over the years, I was, I was smart enough to learn that we have to work together. And then last but not least, the community. You know, the community opened up their arms to us, right? Once they trusted us, they allowed us to come into their homes, into their community. We heard their frustration, we heard their pain, we heard their dreams. And we also, fortunately, we also got to celebrate with them. And so that's what it's all about. It's about helping each other out. And so with that, but before one thing, Mata, thank you so much, you know, for, for supporting us. You know, we received some recognition, right? That, that if, you know, again, with his leadership, he recognized us. And I just want to thank you so much, Chief Mata, for just allowing us sort of to have fun. And city manager, I know she's here, Jennifer. I still remember when we walked into your office before your promotion. So happy for you, you deserve it. We walked in, we gave you the pilot program and, and you said, okay, yeah, well, all right, go for it. And I want to thank you for your support too, when we got recognized that year for our efforts out in the community. So thank you so much, and I'll be quiet now, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing her with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for all your service as well, your sacrifices as a family.
All right, good luck to you, Esther. Okay. Councilmember Peralas is with us virtually. He's going to help us recognize and commend the San Jose Public Library Foundation in celebration of their 35th year anniversary.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I'm not certain if we have anybody present there that is coming down.
Maybe we can, I don't see Don. Any members of the San Jose Public Library Foundation here?
They may be virtual as well, so.
Okay.
I have Rebecca Lee.
Yes.
Okay, I'm moving her over to panelists.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Well, today it is my pleasure to recognize and present the San Jose Public Library Foundation with a commendation in celebration of their 35, 35th year anniversary. The San Jose Public Library Foundation was founded in 1987 by Ruth Campa, who was a former librarian and library commissioner. For over three decades, the Library Foundation has been committed to its mission of providing advocacy, financial support and leadership to our public libraries and educational programs. They continue to envision and work towards a fully educated, equitable and engaged community where everyone has access to lifelong learning. Today marks its 35th year. The foundation is also celebrating a major milestone of raising $35 million in the lifetime of the organization that has been used for programs and resources that serve adults, teens, families and children. Executive Director Dr. Don Chopin and her growing staff fundraised for more than a dozen library programs, including the We Programs, Coding 5K, SJ Aspires and Career Online High School. As the foundation celebrates their 35th anniversary, the Library Foundation is looking forward to the next 35 years of collaborations to remove barriers and continue to uplift and support our underserved communities. I want to thank the San Jose Public Library Foundation for all their years of dedication and support of our communities. I, along with my council colleagues and our mayor, would like to present this commendation to the San Jose Public Library Foundation in celebration of their 35th year anniversary and would like to welcome Rebecca Lee, the vice chair of the board of directors, to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peralas. And thank you, Mayor Licardo and city council members. On behalf of the San Jose Public Library Foundation Board, our executive director, Don Chopin, as well as our foundation staff, we are greatly appreciative and I'm excited and happy to receive the commendation today. As you mentioned, my name's Rebecca Lee and I'm a proud member of the board of directors and I'm a San Jose resident as well. And during the last 35 years, the San Jose Public Library Foundation has really increased our breadth of the support and have supported hundreds of thousands of San Jose residents. And we are actually actively funding 10 programs across all ages, including supporting materials, buying more books, capital renovations and branch support. We are fortunate to also hold the Pat Dando Legacy Endowment to fund children's activities at the Almeda Branch Library. And we hope that this is one of the first of more permanent endowments for our foundation. We also administer two city programs, and that includes San Jose SJ Learns, which is a program to eliminate income-based opportunity gaps so that children are at grade level when they enter fourth grade in reading and math. And we also support the Resilience Core Expanded Learning Pathway to provide living wage work experience for low-income college students who assist K through 12 students in after-school programs. Just want to put out there also that April 6th is National Library Giving Day. We have a $35,000 matching grant in honor of our 35th anniversary. And people can give any amount before April 6th at midnight. And that will be, and everyone's contribution will be doubled up to $35,000. And then donations can be made at www.sjplf.org/donate. And I really just want to, again, thank you, Councilmember Peralas, mayor and city council members, and we greatly are appreciative of this award and recognition.
Thank you, Rebecca. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member, and thanks to the Public Library Foundation and their many supporters for all they do for our community and to help learning. There's one commendation we ought to give, but we're not going to, and that's to Taylor McGuire, who has decided to dedicate a portion of her spring break to sitting in here, watching her mom and city manager run the show at City Hall. So Taylor, you should get a commendation for giving up on a day in Fort Lauderdale to be here. Go Hoosiers. All right. Okay. Rhonda Orders of the Day, does any council have any changes to the printed agenda? And forgive me, my screen's just pulling up now on Zoom if anyone has any changes. We will have an adjournment today, and I'll announce it in just a moment.
There's no hands up on Zoom.
Great, okay, thank you. Councilmember Sparza would like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Lawrence Fan, who is something of a, of a local legend. He spent 42 years as the beloved Sports Information Director at San Jose State University. And we, of course, have so many members of the Spartan family here. It's great to see Coach Brennan and John Poach and so many others here to honor Lawrence. Obviously, the San Jose State family's been through a lot recently and most tragically a few days ago. And we are with them in spirit as we honor Lawrence and his extraordinary legacy here in our community. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I know normally we read this from the dais, but we have some special folks with us today. I'm sure, so. Thank you. So today, today it's an honor to recognize Lawrence Fan, the beloved, beloved Sports Information Director at San Jose State University and to adjourn today's meeting in his name. In attendance today, we have Lawrence's sister, Lillian Cho, his brother, Stephen Fan, sister-in-law, Landa Fan, nephew, Jonathan Fan, niece, Jenny Camberne, and her husband, Thomas Camberne. And I'm going to give a shout out to Doug Osumi with his awesome shirt. There we go. We also have here today Brent Brennan, head coach of San Jose State Football, who has known Lawrence for nearly 20 years, and John Kennedy, head coach of men's golf, who has known Lawrence for 37 years. Lawrence's passion and dedication to his profession and San Jose State University was unmatched. And this was exemplified in his achievement of attending over 500 consecutive San Jose State football games. This means for over 40 years, Lawrence did not miss a single game. And I don't think there's a council member who can say that or a mayor. Lawrence was often routinely the first one in the office and the last one out for decades. And this dedication was recognized by the many awards he received, including being the first Chinese-American inducted into the Sports Information Directors of America Hall of Fame. And his contribution to the sports information profession was incredible and the outpour of love from so many continues to echo throughout San Jose. And one of the things that I've, that has meant a lot is, is hearing all the stories about Lawrence that we've, that we've been hearing, from showing up to the office at three o'clock in the morning with a fresh cup of coffee and a three-piece suit to get a jump on the day, to reciting incredible details from that one game meet or match since the 1980s. His dry humor and infectious smile are embedded in every story, in every memory. And his kindness and care for others and the time that he would take with people continues to bring, be the predominant thought that the, the community has when thinking of him. And while his contribution to the sports information profession was certainly honored, his legacy will be remembered by the positive impact that he made on the thousands of student athletes, colleagues, coaches and friends. And I just wanted to recognize the moment today, just take a minute, that we have, I'd like to honor another member of the Spartan family, who's also a member of the city family. And that's someone that we tragically lost over the weekend at the young age of 24, Dejean Packer. So I wanted to acknowledge Dejean. He's a member of both of our families. He's a San Jose State native graduating from Gunderson High, San Jose City College and San Jose State University. At San Jose State, Dejean played running back on the Spartan football team and served as a mentor for students on the east side at the Robert Sanders Elementary School. So following his playing days, Dejean joined the San Jose Police Department just a year ago. And his passing is felt throughout San Jose, and we continue to grieve this tremendous loss. So today is a day of mourning. We lost two incredible people of the Spartan and San Jose family, but we also must honor them today. I'd like to honor Lawrence Fan and invite his sister, Lillian Cho, to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Licardo and the city council members. Lawrence Fan was my older brother, who I saw growing up, who loved Arthur Fiedler and the Boston Pops, The Lawrence Welk Show, Bonanza, roller derby, WWE Tag Team Wrestling, and Laura Scudder's barbecued potato chips stuffed in his sandwiches. My brother Lawrence Fan's life as a San Jose State Spartan began in 1980. We actually started our Spartan journey together, I as a freshman and him as an incoming SID, Sports Information Director. 39 years as San Jose State's SID and then in 2019, becoming the Associate Athletics Director for Football Communications and Special Projects for a total of 42 years. As the first Chinese-American to be inducted into the College Sports Information Directors of America COSIDA's Hall of Fame in 2012, along with receiving the Arch Ward Award for his outstanding contribution to the field of college sports information, I had the privilege to be there in St. Louis at that monumental event. In 2013, Lawrence was honored with the Trailblazer Award by COSIDA, presented to an individual who is a pioneer in the profession and who has mentored and helped improve the level of ethnic and gender diversity within COSIDA. And again, I was there in Orlando to see the recognition from his professional organization for his deep devotion to mentorship. Lawrence served as the chairperson of the Job Secrets Committee from 1994 to 2017 within COSIDA and received the President's Award for Exemplary Service and Leadership. He organized and managed job-related activities and assigned topics pertaining to on-the-job activities for small group discussions. He started and managed the COSIDA Career Center, informing members about job vacancies and movement within the profession. And at the two COSIDA annual meetings that he was highly recognized for, I met so many young professionals in the sports information directors arena that would come up to me and tell me all these wonderful things about how Lawrence helped them get their first job or first experience or how to market themselves for a potential better experience at those meetings. I mean, dozens and dozens of people, young, young people. He's mentored many San Jose State University interns in the Sports Information Office and has served on the Board of Directors for the San Jose Sports Authority and the National Football Foundation's Northern California Chapter. Although Lawrence was past retirement age, there were no plans for his retirement. His worth ethic was that he had a certain level of responsibility that he carried through to the highest level and standards. We, the Fan family, are deeply saddened at Lawrence's unexpected and sudden passing. I want to thank you, city council member Maya Espaza, for honoring and recognizing the dedication and love that Lawrence gave to his community, city and his extended Spartan family at San Jose State University. I think we have Coach Brennan.
Hello. I think it's pretty awesome that we're all here today when you have, you made just that. I wasn't speaking loud enough, it's kind of my job. With all these people, Mayor Licardo, council member Sparza, the rest of the council, the chief of police, like everybody here is in some form, some career choice of service, of giving of yourself to the greater good. And there's real magic in that. And no one was more magic at that than Lawrence Fan. He was this incredible tornado of like positivity and optimism and funny goofy mannerisms and, and he would cheer me on from the back when I had to talk to a group of people. And he was with me during, yeah, he would get the crowd going from behind while I was talking so that everybody would cheer. He just had this incredible way with him. And, you know, in a room full of people that are motivated by service, no one was a better man of service than Lawrence Fan. He's served our institution for over 40 years. And there's not a student athlete or an athletic department member that did not feel his impact on their life or their career in a. that did not feel his impact on their life or their career in a positive way. I've been a part of 100 games as a coach there, and to think that he had 400-plus on me is just, just insane. Like that kind of consistency, that kind of, you know, showing up every day for other people. Because when he gave, he gave without any expectation of anything in return. And so I just want to thank everybody for giving me a chance to remember the great Lawrence Fan, what a magical human being he was, and we will miss him every day going forward. Thank you.
Coach Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak of one of my best friends. This is going to be a bit of a challenge for me because I love Lawrence. I got a few notes that I made. But I think if I'm really going to try to nail this tribute, I got to be a bit awkward and a bit thrilling at the same time. Somehow I'm unprepared for this. I don't know how, but I came to San Jose State in 1985, and I probably met Lawrence within the first day or two I was there. Lawrence took me in as something of a, I think, a project early on. He, he really was a bit of a big brother and best friend all at the same time. As a student athlete coming into San Jose State, you don't, well, at least I wasn't really prepared for big-boy golf or big-boy athletics. Didn't even know that a Sports Information Director existed. We didn't really have much of, much of that where I came from. And Lawrence taught, taught me the ropes. As, as a, as a golfer, you get to play the game, but after the game, there's quite a bit more to it. And Lawrence was there every single day, and I never forgot that. And, and I used to hang out with him just to, to get some more information and get some more love from Lawrence. Then awkwardly, or not awkwardly enough, but I, I got into coaching. And I got over, coached, started coaching over at Santa Clara and coached there for eight years. And unbeknownst to a lot of Spartans, I talked a lot with Lawrence when I was at Santa Clara. I know it's not really kosher because we're rivals and all that, but Lawrence was coaching me while I was there. And then I got the job here at San Jose State, and I could not wait to work with Lawrence and to share the experiences with him and to work on projects like we've done as a, as a coach. He was the first one to see the vision of the, the greatness of the Western Intercollegiate and what that could lead to. And now we have a 10-year contract with the Golf Channel, and we have set a standard for college golf that everybody in the country is trying to match. We've also been able to create a, an amazing practice facility, but he was behind that. You'd never know it because he didn't put himself out there in that regard. He didn't do anything for the credit. He did it for the school and for the kids. And I don't, I don't know. He was the master of finding the good in everything. In everything my kids did, in everything my team did, in everything this athletic department and everything that this school did. He was, it would, it might take him all night, right? It might be there until four o'clock in the morning, but he would find it. And he would put it in a way that you could understand and appreciate it like no, nobody ever could. He was a true master of that, and I'll never be able to, to live a day without thinking of him. I just want to leave you with the thought, I'm kind of losing my way in my notes, but I want to leave you with the thought that Lawrence Fan may have been one of the most appropriately named gentlemen in this, well, he is for me. Because if you think about the word fan, it's short for fanatic. And a fanatic by definition is someone who is extremely enthusiastic about and devoted to some interest or activity. To me, Lawrence was the ultimate fan of human potential and achievement that I've ever met. And I love you, Lawrence. I miss you. Rest in peace, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
And thank you to the many Spartans who came out today. Show your love for Lawrence and your support for Lawrence's family and friends. Okay. On orders of the day, let's vote. No, we don't need a vote. Is that right? There are no changes?
Right, there's no changes.
Okay, great. We'll go on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have anything to report out of closed session today.
Item number seven is the consent calendar. Councilmember Sparza would like to pull item 2.14.
Nope, actually, I'm okay.
You're okay with that one?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? Just pulling up Zoom now, so Tony asked you to notify me if you see anyone.
There's no hands of councilmembers, just members of the public.
Okay, we'll go to the public then for public comment.
People are beaming. Give us just a second.
Hi, we're Beakman here. I'm assuming you're talking about all the items on the consent calendar are available for public comment at this time. Thank you. I guess you'll be talking about budget issues and investment issues that are on this consent calendar and that are also on the regular agenda today. Good luck in how to really be discussing, I, I've tried to make it clear, you know, we're at a time we need to start to make clear how we can talk about our memos and our projects of 2023 and '24. We need to start doing that now, and I think we have to develop a really honest, clear style how we do that. And if we do, we're creating then some really important, good examples. We can't go all over the place in how we're going to be creating examples for 2023 and '24. We have to be very clear, direct, and kind of exact, I feel. And I think that is the way we can really address the issues of community safety and community public safety. That I think we have honest questions, what really expect in 2023 and '24. I've been giving notice of, you know, earthquake things of the past year. I don't know if that's correct or not. Good reports can really help with that and clear that up. Some sort of natural disaster preparedness, do we have to do at this time? The issues with Putin and Russia have made very clear that there's going to be a big push towards US fossil fuel in the next few years. That is a paradigm that, you know, considering all the good efforts we're trying to make towards renewable energies in the Bay Area and California at this time, we have to continue that good fight, to continue those good practices into the next few years and how our memos and projects will, will show that. So good luck how exactly our memos will look like and, and say in the next few months, about the next few years.
John Gustafson.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm speaking as relates to 2.14. John Gustafson, Senior Vice President, SAP Center, Sharks Ice, Mayor Liccardo, councilmembers. We're thrilled to announce this partnership with a pioneer of Silicon Valley. TechCU is an award-winning financial institution with more than 60-year commitment to the area with an unwavering commitment to exceptional experiences for its members. TechCU and Shark Sports Entertainment share similar values and love for our local community. TechCU's role as a philanthropic leader in our community makes it an ideal partner to open the state-of-the-art arena. We welcome TechCU to Team Teal, and we look forward to many years of our partnership. I would like to thank Nancy Klein and her staff for their work on this item. And we support staff's recommendation, and thank you for consideration and your support.
Calling user one.
Yeah, regarding budget, I just hope that you guys do the right thing and put it into.
Excuse me, the budget's the next item. Did you want to talk about consent calendar?
I'll talk about the budget for the next time. I love this, I love this censorship. Thanks.
Back to council. Move approval. Second.
All right, let's vote on consent.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Caralas.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Roscoe.
Aye.
Davis. Davis. Espaza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Thank you. Liccardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to the report of the city manager. Item 3.1.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Thank you. Item 3.3 is the approval of the fiscal year 2022 to '23, Mayor's March Budget Message. I believe there's no staff presentation, but Jim is here in the box to answer what I'm sure will be many good questions. I want to thank my colleagues for their very good suggestions and input. I'll have more to say in a moment, but let's first go to public comment.
Hey, I have caller, I have people in person, so I'm going to start with the people in person. Gabriel Hernandez. And come down in no particular order, just when you hear a name, make, make your way down. First person on the podium gets to speak first. So that's Gabriel Hernandez, Krista Delatorre, Raymundo Espinoza.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members. My name is Gabriel Hernandez, the director for the Cisupueta Collective. We also sign on to the Real Coalition Letter around the, this memo on 3.3. Today, you're going to hear several of our community members and staff from all five of our organizations support many of your budget items, Mayor, and city, and the direction you're giving staff. We are very encouraged and hopeful of the many items that you have outlined in your memo. When we comment today, many of our themes are going to include focusing on the census tracts that have been impacted by the pandemic, which means East San Jose, we speak using, when we use the equity lens, like in your memo and also the memo of Arenas, Espaza, and Carrasco, we mean the neighborhoods neglected for decades with little infrastructure support. When we raise the voice of the most vulnerable residents, we also mean the unhoused, the families living in cars and stacked, you know, two and three families to a house or an apartment. And economically speaking, we, we're talking about those farmers of color that Vegilution works with in developing their, their economy and the, the work they've been doing in the food industry. We also want to commit our philanthropic resources. We, we know that, you know, the philanthropic community has made a lot of different investments, but we are putting out that we would like to work with both the city and the county to leverage our resources together. And then finally, we so appreciate your proposal to support the School of Arts and Culture with the Dollar per Dollar Match Grant and our endeavor to create community wealth and economic development. We commit to continue our partnership with you the best way we can and, and, you know, just call on us and we'll make those connections. So thank you very much for your memo.
Okay, go ahead. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Jessica and Eric Glader.
All right, thank you. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Krista Delatorre. I am here on behalf of the South Bay Labor Council. We represent over 100,000 working people in San Benito and Santa Clara Counties. I want to thank councilmembers Espaza, Arenas, and Carrasco for their memo, especially item B and item C. Today, I urge you to support the Essential Workers Council and their call for a budget that centers and uplifts San Jose working families. San Jose's ongoing staffing shortage is preventing vulnerable community members from accessing vital services and resources. In 2024, 60% of city employees will be eligible for retirement, and item B will help ensure that the city provides good-paying jobs and excellent services. Additionally, it's been over three years since Silvery Towers, a city subsidized residential tower that revealed the ugly realities of the underground economy and human trafficking. Wage theft and worker abuse remain pervasive and extremely serious crimes that San Jose must respond to with urgency. To tackle wage theft, the city should support item C along with the following strategies. One, advance the delayed response of construction ordinance. Two, assess and prioritize the staffing needs of the city's Office of Equality Assurance. And three, engage in workers' rights outreach with the county and its grassroots networks. This year's budget presents the city with an unprecedented opportunity to uplift working families and build back better. I urge you today to support councilmembers Espaza, Arenas, and Carrasco's memo. Thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Raymundo Espinoza. I'm the CEO of Gardner Health Services. I'm here to support the proposal to, for the School of Arts and Culture. I think it's a, it's a, the start of a new beginning. I think we need to develop the area and, and really continue to encourage pride in, in our culture and, and the development of our organizations and hopefully allow people to stay within the area. You know, it's, it's very challenging these days. I think that proposal will definitely give us a start. As a healthcare provider, Gardner will provide numerous mental health services, which is in, which is in great need. Our relationship with the School of Arts and Culture, I think we demonstrated the, the ability to implement activities through the pandemic, and we will continue to do so, and we really ask you to support that proposal. I'm also asking you to support many of the items identified in the real budget letter that we submitted. And we appreciate your, your, your listening to us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo and councilmembers. My name is Jessica Pasedios. I am the Executive Director at the School of Arts and Culture at the Mexican Heritage Plaza. Today, I am in support of the mayor's recommendation to allocate a $1 million match grant for us to acquire a mostly vacant property across the street from La Plaza. With your support, we have an opportunity to expand SOAC's cultural programming with new performance and rehearsals. A theater and cafe. In addition, we also have an opportunity to bring a major behavioral health service provider to the Mayfair community through our equity partner, Gardner Health Services. This project has the potential for exponential impact for both the local community and San Jose's creative sector. In addition, the $1 dollar match allows SOAC to mobilize our philanthropic partners. Finally, your investment in East San Jose actively centers equity for a community that has been plagued by longstanding inequities, including the disproportionate impact that COVID-19 has had on our local residents and business community. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Eric Glader. Thank you for the opportunity here to present and talk with you all. I am here to support the mayor's memo and to hopefully get Foot Patrol back here, not just in the streets of downtown San Jose, but also in the high-crime areas throughout San Jose as a whole. I have been coming downtown for the better part of a year and a half, every single day, coming to work. I have been coming downtown for the better part of a year and a half, every single day, coming to work. I'm at Fountain Alley where I see all types of things. And I talk to a lot of business owners, a lot of police officers, a lot of people at San Jose State. And the overwhelming common denominator is when police are on the streets, not just in their cars, but on the streets, people feel better. You add on the element for this ability for community and relationships to be built, and it just strengthens the opportunity that we all have here at this really critical moment. So I have sent in a letter. I hopefully have some supporters as well bringing their endorsement for this. And again, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you.
Okay, that's our last in-person speaker. I'm moving over to the Zoom participants. I have caller 4379.
Hi, I support more funding above and beyond what this message proposes for improving traffic safety infrastructure and additional staffing to plan and deliver projects quicker than they have been implemented thus far. As Councilmember Peralas said at the most recent T and E meeting, we should start treating traffic violence similarly to public safety because it is public safety. For a constrained budget, this message commits millions in one-time funds and over $3 million in ongoing funds for the police department. The cost to stem traffic violence in this message is at most about $1 million in one-time funds. That isn't treating them similarly, despite the fact that this year is on pace to be the deadliest for traffic-related deaths. Also, more traffic enforcement affects our Black and Brown communities disproportionately, and traffic stops are the most common interactions SJPD has with residents. In the most recent audit by the independent OIR group, they found the following. Black and Hispanic community members are arrested more frequently than would be expected based on their proportion of San Jose's population compared with white community members. And SJPD officers treat Hispanic community members differently in use-of-force events compared with white community members. Hispanic community members experience a greater amount of independent use-of-force activities per event than their white counterparts did. And additionally, the injuries sustained by Hispanic community members were more severe than those sustained by white community members. So I, I think it's, it's sad that we're, we're still suggesting traffic enforcement as the biggest fix to mitigate and stem what is a record year of deaths. I think infrastructure is the way to go. Quick builds, there's only four being proposed in this message. You know, they come at the price tag of, I think Hillsdale recently came in at about 200,000. So four of those is less than a million. We can do a lot more, and I'd love to see them treated similarly, the two.
Old Cameron.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you for all you're doing in this budget process. I want to step back, though, and thank my old ally, Maya Asparza, for honoring Lawrence and the loss of Dejean. I had the opportunity of meeting our new chief up at the Seek Center when we had other losses up there in their community in Indianapolis and also here locally. And it was really great to see the honoring investor. There's a little more positive note. I just want to thank everyone for considering the email that I've sent to all of you and just briefly state that I really support the amazing work that Ray Reardon and his team at our Office of Emergency Services does for our community. He's a great ally and supporter. I wanted to just say that what I'm asking for is above and beyond his budget as just a search who's out here in the field all the time, seeing what they're doing, and we're just looking to see that we have more search out in the field. Because I think that having more conscious eyes in the neighborhoods can support, for example, the Neighborhood Patrol Program vaccines and just having more engaged communities. What I'm asking for, for our search community is quite small, 300,000, which could generate 800 new certs over the next year. That's one tenth of 1% of our $3 billion budget. I really think that is a very efficient, effective way as an old finance guy. And I think we can really get a lot of benefit out of that and building stronger neighborhoods so they're safer, secure, and on a daily basis. And then when a disaster does occur, support them.
Lena with Santa Clara Valley Open Space.
Good afternoon, Lena Iain with the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority. On behalf of the authority, I'd like to quickly emphasize the importance of several elements within the budget message. First, the Open Space Authority is in strong agreement that a city of San Jose resilience team or resilience officer would provide much-needed resources for current and future climate actions and for coordinating and tying this work together across departments. We also invite coordination with the authority on opportunities for state and federal funding for nature-based solutions and other regional climate actions. Secondly, we strongly support the growth and management of our urban forests to reduce heat islands, prioritize historically understerved areas, and achieve no net can't be lost. We want to reiterate our support for the Santa Clara Valley Urban Forestry Alliance and efforts to pool resources, share best practices, and coordinate pursuits for funding and implementation. Third, we thank the mayor for emphasizing the need for the city's ongoing participation in the Coyote Valley Conservation Area's master planning process, which will include robust community engagement efforts and support and funding for the Monterey Corridor Study. Lastly, the Open Space Authority strongly supports continued funding for the Resilience Corps, recognizing the important opportunities that the program provides for young people and expanding access to career pathways, including those related to climate resilience projects and programs. Thank you.
Gloria Chenhu.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council Members. This is Gloria Chenhu. I co-chair the Create TV Board of Directors along with Sandy Clavett. We want to simply say thank you to the mayor to include Create TV as it thinks in a few months of opening up a new space in downtown San Jose. We're calling this space Open San Jose. We will be providing multi-purpose rooms, gallery, and public spaces that will be provided and available to community groups, nonprofits, individuals, local governments, broad educational and community groups. We plan to activate this space, bringing together the technology of Create TV, its access to community programming, and providing a new opportunity that will provide the community with opportunities to be more active and have access to TV channels and resources. The provision of a city contract that will allow us to make space available will strengthen our ability to continue to serve the committee. Thank you so very much for including us in the current budget. Thank you for this long-term commitment to Create TV.
Kyra Kazanzas, SBCN.
Hi, my name is Kyra Kazanzas, CEO of Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. And I'm speaking as a co-convenor of the Nonprofit Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition that works to advance racial justice and equity in our community. I want to thank the mayor for addressing the continuing food need as well as the need to allocate funding for the work of the Recovery Task Force and the RIPS process, as well as a number of other equity-focused initiatives. We also support the proposals by council members Arenas, Asparza, and Carrasco to combat wage theft and bring equity to PRNS program pricing and capital expenditures. We continue to ask the city and county to focus more resources on continued pandemic relief, wealth-building, health equity, housing and homelessness, nonprofit sustainability, and reimagining public safety. Because these are the areas that we believe will best advance racial justice and recovery of those who've been hardest hit by the pandemic. And we believe that investments in prevention and intervention are more effective and efficient investments than in downstream responses like policing. Thank you for this opportunity to provide public comment.
Zeke Sandoval.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This is Zeke Sandoval, speaking on behalf of PATH, people assisting the homeless. We firmly agree with the mayor, homelessness and affordable housing are without a doubt the number one issue facing San Jose and are appropriately the first priority in this proposal. As one of the largest nonprofit homeless service providers in California, with multiple programs and supportive housing sites here in San Jose, we can say with confidence, homes and homelessness, quick build apartments and motel conversions are proven tools to quickly and cost-effectively stand up new homes for our unhoused neighbors. On top of those newer tools, post-entitlement navigation speeds up the process of opening affordable housing, like we do at our PATH Ventures arm. Additionally, accelerated distribution of rent assistance is crucial to prevent more people from losing their homes, especially with state eviction protection set to expire just two weeks from Thursday. From our experience, these investments in housing will be more sustainable if they're paired with onsite supportive services like case management and counseling, recognizing that people may need extra help after experiencing years of homelessness. We also appreciate this budget's smarter approach to public safety. All of us, including law enforcement officers, are better off when people get the mental health support that they need in a crisis rather than threats of violence or imprisonment. As both the city and the state turn attention to people exiting incarceration, we really encourage a greater focus on re-entry support systems for people who are exiting jail or prison into housing insecurity or outright homelessness. No one benefits when someone goes from a cell to a tent. So PATH stands ready to partner with the city in implementing all of these investments once they're passed. Thank you very much.
Call it user one.
Look, we need things for public infrastructure. We don't need more traffic cops. I know Peralas is all hot for it because he wants to make the fines hurt, right? And guess what? Guess what? You don't need more policemen, women, whoever, you know, them, they, however you guys do in the pronouns these days. Do you really need more of them harassing motorists in a car? You know what the fines are out there that make it hurt Peralas? You know, don't use your blinker. It's like $500. I was just in traffic court the other day, beating the system, by the way. And, uh, yeah, you don't need that. We need to have people patrolling midnight to 6:00 AM when the real crime happens. See, you guys, you guys want to live in a fantasy land of what I call zero vision. You guys call it Vision Zero. You want to live in Zero Vision where there's going to be unicorns running down the street, right? It's not going to happen. We need to build up our public infrastructure. You need to fix the roads. You need to fix around the manhole covers that keep breaking. They're all over the city. Look at that. Drive over a manhole cover and it's broken around the manhole cover. It's terrible. I'm sorry, I used the term manhole cover, the day hole cover, okay? So you need to invest, you know, we need less things about like flavored tobacco or, you know, all these flag-raising ceremonies. You guys need to invest in real infrastructure. And Peralas last night in the mayor debate that they had last night, this guy sounded like a hippie on LSD. I swear to God. I actually talked to a hippie on LSD at the park that night, and he sounded more coherent and with it than Peralas, who's the policeman, the teacher, and now the city council member. So hopefully he doesn't win for the mayoral race. I'm not voting for any of you, by the way, who are running, except the one guy who's not on the city council.
Chad Johnston, Create TV.
Hello, my name is Chad Johnston. I am the CEO of Create TV San Jose. I just want to thank the mayor's office and staff and council for working with Create TV over the last few years to help find a home for Create TV and now our founding anchor partners, Work San Jose, Chopsticks Alley Art, Lead Filipino, NorCal Public Media, San Jose Spotlight, and the Silicon Valley African Film Festival, as well as the multitudes of nonprofits and community groups that will pass through our new facility, Open San Jose. This is going to be a one-of-a-kind community center led and governed by community and will be an example for community media and nonprofit centers across the country. Open San Jose is envisioned as a hub where nonprofits, artists, community leaders, and social changemakers can come together to tackle big issues, space for collaboration and vision powered by creativity and technology, really a space for dialogue, storytelling, and engagement where community can learn and grow together. So we're, we're really excited to deepen our partnership and relationship with the city, and we look forward to providing the city with community gathering and meeting space in a creative environment, whether that's in person or hybrid. We'll have all the technology that, that folks need. So your support in this budget will greatly benefit our ability to provide 5,000 hours a year of free and sliding-scale space to community in this new 18,000-square-foot technology-equipped facility right here in downtown. So as always, thank you for your support and good luck.
Carlos Duran.
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Carlos Duran. I am a fellow representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union Local 405. I represent over 40,000 members in Northern California. 3,200 of those members live right here in San Jose. We request that the council vote in favor of a manager's budget addenda. We support the NBA because based on council members' arenas, Asparza, and Carrasco's memo that includes more resources for the OEA Labor Agency, the Responsible Construction Organization, pilot collaboration with the Fair Workplace Collaborative, and that also includes a priority the council previously voted for that included a Responsible Construction Ordinance and inclusion of public works in the existing wage theft policy. All this helps in the battle against wage, wage theft that has ramped up since COVID. We respectfully request you vote in favor of the manager's budget addenda on the basis of the arenas, Asparza, and Carrasco memo and the priorities the council previously voted on so that it can move forward to another vote in June. I thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Dr. Lisa Andrews, SVEF.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Lisa Andrew, lucky CEO of the Silicon Valley Education Foundation. Thank you for your very thoughtful budgetary process. I know that it can be grueling at times, and you have many, many needs of San Jose to consider. And speaking to you today on behalf of the Eastside Education Initiative on the memo with the Latino Education Advancement Foundation, we are both being reactive to the longstanding economic mobility that has not been afforded to the East San Jose and coming to you with a proactive solution in education. All the things that, other things that have been talked about today can be prevented when we educate our community and when all of our students have the same access and opportunity to economic mobility. We would ask that support of this, and we are currently meeting with the city manager to determine the amount. But as you know, every dollar invested in education is $10,000, $11,000. That does not have to be invested in, down the road, in homelessness, in jails and, and crime prevention. So thank you for your thoughtfulness in putting this on. We look forward to working with the city manager in the future. And please work with us in raising the economic mobility in East San Jose for the students there. Thank you.
Claire Beakman.
Hi, thank you. I spoke on the second quarter financial report and the San Jose Investment Annual Policy Review Report. It's kind of like looking backwards and how to move forwards in our future, looking to our past, how to move forward into our future. So thank you for that. For this item, just to continue the mayor's words and all the really interesting memos, I think, thank you very much for wage theft ideas and for Rob Peralas wanting to work on sanction encampment process. That's, that's really interesting work and ideas. You know, the Home Key Project has been really interesting for ourselves, but it's investing in our future, I feel, you know, within the homeless programs in ways that we already know. Being able to use the, you know, the state and federal money, and especially the state money that will be available, you know, they're going to be continuously, you know, making that a funding source in our future. Good luck how we can develop good programs for communities beyond Home Key. And that's important. We have good skills to do that. We shouldn't be afraid to subsidize those programs in the future. We're afraid to still talk about the word subsidy. Good luck how that can be a more open subject. With public safety and things like Vision Zero, there's been a real big push towards new technology all around the Bay Area at this time and law enforcement questions. Again, it is simply, you know, the openness and accountability and good guidelines of technology, you know, technology guidelines and the ideas of reimagine health and human services and racial equity that really can be addressing how to address our law enforcement questions at this time. And it's interesting how that works. So good luck in how to work towards that in this upcoming year. Thank you.
Chelsea Mueller, Destination Home.
Good afternoon. This is Chelsea Mueller, speaking on behalf of Destination Home. We are calling in support of the mayor's March Budget Message, which declares homelessness and affordable housing as a priority for the upcoming budget and calls for funding a variety of strategies consistent with the community plan to end homelessness like constructing more interim housing and expanding homelessness prevention strategies. While building more permanent housing is key to ending homelessness, we know that these types of immediate interventions can serve as an important bridge until more deeply affordable and supportive housing comes online. until more deeply affordable and supportive housing comes online. We also strongly support the mayor's proposal to allocate ongoing general fund dollars to support the expansion of interim housing and other homelessness strategies as this will help supplement important, important dedicated funding sources and also serves as an important statement of this city council's commitment to scaling our homelessness strategies to really meet the depth of the crisis before us. Finally, we'd like to note our support of the letter submitted by the Real Coalition outlining key priorities to advance racial equity. We encourage the council to vote in support of the mayor's budget message and look forward to further, further engaging with you all throughout this budget process. Thank you.
Andrea Urtens, CEO Home First.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Good afternoon, honorable mayor and city council members. I'm speaking here in support of mayor's budget message to release additional general funds towards homelessness and affordable housing. I'm Andrea Urtens, the CEO for Home First. Home First is a leading provider of housing opportunities, including emergency shelter, interim, and permanent housing to our unhoused neighbors and housing insecure neighbors in Santa Clara County. We are working with our partners at the city and county and other nonprofits to develop long-term solutions to homelessness by working together and developing resources strategically. We can make our vision of ending homelessness locally a reality. To the mayor's recommendation, we have witnessed success in our bridge housing and emergency interim housing sites. In our BHC sites, we have moved more than 125 people into permanent housing. Our motel program allows for our teams to immediately begin working on housing plans with participants. And this past year, we brought online homeless prevention program that supports families with short-term rental assistance so they do not need to become unhoused. These are all programs that work, which is why I'm here today offering support of the mayor, mayor's budget plan. Thank you for the opportunity to share my voice.
Jill Boarder.
Hi, thank you. Um, I actually thought I was going to be speaking about something totally different today, but when I woke up this morning to read through all the, uh, latest memos, I was thrilled, thrilled. So thank you for the memos. The one that thrilled me the most, and I'm, I'm really passionate about this. I'm so excited that council member Mayhan put his memo out. It's five pages long and I would suggest that anyone listening, please take the time to read this memo because our issues are much larger than, you know, these individual pieces, which are also important. We really have, in my opinion, lost the trust of the public. So when I read this five-page memo, I was so happy. It was like drinking a tall glass of cold water after walking in the desert. And what I mean by that is I'm really hopeful that when you go to discuss this, um, budget, that you look carefully at what council member Mayhan is saying. He is outlining a solution for the public to, for the government to earn back our trust. And it's essential at this point. I, my frustration level is so high. My distrust level is high. My, you know, um, feeling of hopelessness is high. And this memo gave me hope that there's kind of a path that we could take. So I hope, I'm going to read a couple of things that really, really impacted me. Um, and you know, one is, um, I'm calling on council to provide greater leadership by prioritizing being specific about what matters most. Things like the word pragmatic, the things like we need concrete measurable objective goals. So if you could please in your conversation, um, do as he's asking, which is let's outline and have, you know, um, these measurable goals that you guys can identify so that the public, you can earn back our trust. Thank you.
I have a speaker in person, Adolfo Gomez. Please make your way down. Um, I will go to the next Zoom speaker while Adolfo comes down. P A W I S. P A W I S, go ahead.
Oh, am I speaking?
Yeah, I don't have, I.
Okay, all right. So sorry to change my name. Um, good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Fawina Opiso Mondina. I'm a member of the Philippine Association of Workers and Immigrants, as well as the Santa Clara Wage Staff Coalition. I am here today to request the council to vote in favor of a manager's budget addenda, the MBA based on council members arenas, Esparza, and Carrasco's memo. And this memo includes giving more resources for the OEA Labor Agency, the Responsible Construction Ordinance, and a pilot collaboration with the Fair Workplace Collaborative. The MBA also includes the prior, uh, includes the priorities the council previously voted for that included a responsible construction ordinance and the inclusion of public works in the existing wage theft policy. Wage theft has been on the uptick since COVID. Sunnyvale has unanimously passed a responsible construction ordinance and Mountain View Staff is drafting one. So, um, that's why we really request a vote in favor of the manager's budget agenda on the basis of the memo and the priorities the council previously voted so that we can move, it can move forward to another vote in June. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you for allowing me to be here. So I'm speaking in behalf of a lot of the people I work around. Our area, I'm a small business owner in downtown San Jose. I've been there for about 25 years between different locations. Um, I just want to tell you how important is to have a police presence in a friendly environment. So you have a police walking around, talking to business owners, talking to people who are visiting San Jose and all that. Will make a huge difference. Will make a huge impact exactly what's going on right now in downtown. Um, a lot of people don't live in downtown. A lot of people don't spend a lot of time in downtown. Like I say, since I moved from LA in 1990, I've been in downtown. That's all my jobs are being downtown. Now I'm a business owner and I've been in downtown. I know how crucial and how important is to have that connection with, um, a group of police officers than they would be dedicating just for the downtown court. I know a lot of times people says, well, the city always focused in the downtown area. In reality, anybody who lives in San Jose and has family coming from anywhere, you bring them to downtown. You bring them to the cathedral, you bring them to the museum, you bring them to have fun at night and things like that. And in the end, you're going to show your city and this is what we are. This is our city. This is our downtown court. And I think we're missing that part, you know? I, I miss that part of see police officer walking around, talking to the, to the members of the community, but basically making a rapport with those business owners. We know who we are and we can be more proactive and how to help and prevent not only crime, but how to help, you know, people who are homeless, people who have, you know, some disabilities to be able to respond. Um, I, we're not trying to be a police force in downtown. That's not what we are. We are open doors policy for everyone. And I think that's crucial for our business to have that backup from our city, especially in the areas like San James Park and those areas. I think everybody knows what I'm talking about. So I'm talking about, you know, different people have been talking about it for the last five years, especially with the pandemic now is getting more hectic for us, you know? It's something we deal with this every day. You know, we, we don't complain, we don't call the police, we don't call the city. We just deal with, but would be nice to have that support and, uh, making the city more safe. You know, perception is very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ruth Silver Taub.
Mayor and council members, thank you for your work on the budget. The Wage Theft Coalition I coordinate requested the council vote in favor of an MBA manager's budget addenda based on council members arenas, Esparza, and Carrasco's memo that includes more resources for the OEA Labor Agency, the Responsible Construction Ordinance, and a pilot collaboration with the Fair Workplace Collaborative. We also request that the MBA resurrect the prior, uh, priority that was voted on and it includes responsible construction ordinance and the inclusion of public works in the existing wage theft policy that is critical. Wage theft has been on the uptick since COVID. I see it on the OLSC, the county's OLSC advice line that I supervise at the Alexander Community Law Center, uh, where I work and on the Fair Workplace Collaborative. Sunnyvale just unanimously passed a responsible construction ordinance. Mopitas also has one and Mountain View Staff are drafting one. And MBA is not new since the council last year in March voted in favor of an MBA proposed by council members Arenas and Esparza on a different subject. We request a vote in favor of the MBA on the basis of the Arenas, Esparza, and, uh, Carrasco memo plus the priorities the council previously voted for so that it can move forward to another vote in June. Thank you so much.
Brian Pores, UA Local 393.
Hi, good afternoon, mayor and city council members. My name is Brian Pores and I'm a plumber by trade out of Local 393 here in San Jose. Was also born and raised in San Jose and I represent over 3,000 plumbers, pipe fitters, and HVACR service technicians. I'm speaking today in support of the Essential Workers Council and their call for a budget that reflects our great city's core values, uh, values that include supporting and uplifting our, our local working families. Uh, I'd like to give a big thanks and shout out to council members Esparza, Arenas, and Carrasco for their memo that emphasizes these core values. And I seriously hope, uh, this receives a yes vote from the council, especially on items B and C, um, which will improve the city, city hiring issues and also help prevent the heinous crime of wage theft. Uh, if our leadership is serious about empowering our middle class, uh, this is a fantastic opportunity. This will allow for a proactive approach to wage theft prevention and also allow for the city to address the, uh, understaffing and employee retention issues. I urge the council to listen to our working folks that raise families in our community. Uh, we have an opportunity to build back better together and, um, no secret that together we can do great things. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Brianna Horta.
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name is Brianna Horta and I'm, I'm the senior manager with the San Jose Conservation Corps. Um, first, we'd like to thank both, um, Mayor Sam Liccardo and all the members of, of San Jose City Council for making it the visionary idea of the resilience corps into a reality. Um, I'm here today on behalf of the organization to express our support for the mayor's March budget message. The San Jose Conservation Corps is specifically grateful for the resilience pillar of the message, which reaffirms San Jose's commitment to continuing the highly successful resilience corps program. Um, as a, as the program manager overseeing the resilience corps program, I've seen the impact that it's had, um, on making our green spaces and our trails equitable and accessible to all the residents of San Jose. Um, and we've also seen the professional growth of our core members. Um, so again, we'd like to thank the mayor and all the San Jose City Council. I mean, we hope to continue this program, um, to continue transforming the young lives of the leaders of San Jose, the future leaders of San Jose. Um, so, thank you.
Shane Patrick Connolly.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you, Mayor Liccardo, for, uh, your budget message. Uh, I appreciate that you're building our reserves toward the recommended 10% level in there and also that you're prioritizing homelessness and public safety, uh, safety of our community is of the utmost importance. Councilmember Davis, I noticed had a memo that I encourage everyone to support. On bringing back the patrols for traffic, uh, we've seen an alarming number of pedestrian deaths. Um, also council may want to think about how to educate around preventing dangerous behavior by pedestrians, which was causal in some of these cases. Also highlighting, uh, other efforts to increase public safety, uh, from some of your colleagues, like including Foot Patrol. The memo from council member Mayhan was very interesting and I think it would go a long way to build accountability and credibility amongst, uh, public officials and looking at ways to align these, uh, top priorities of our city with the incentives structure of our city for council and top staff. Uh, I think that keeping the city focused on its priorities and the work that goes into that focus can be helpful to all of us. And it can also build accountability and credibility as you measure and report out, transparently, how we're proceeding toward the goals. There's a lot of promises often made. And then, uh, in areas like homelessness, we, we often don't see the sort of progress we expect for the investment that we're making as a community. And so, uh, encourage the council to, um, support examination, uh, of that incentive structure that, um, council member Mayhan has recommended as well. So thank you very much.
Justin Capone.
Hello, my name is Justin Capone and I'm a policy associate at Save the Bay. Mayor Liccardo and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Over the past two years, Bay Area residents have faced the difficult realities of climate change along with a devastating pandemic. Depping wildfire, drought, flooding, and extreme heat is our new norm. If we don't take preventative action now, we'll pay more deeply for the consequences later. In light of this reality, Save the Bay strongly supports the emphasis on climate resilience in the mayor's budget message. Implementing successful climate resilience and adaptation projects will require collaboration across departments and a clear project manager. We support the city manager being tasked with coordinating this work. We also appreciate the inclusion of projects spanning many areas of resilience from sea level rise to electrification. We urge a broadened definition of the urban forest to include green stormwater infrastructure, breeding of parks and streetscapes, and other greening and public spaces in addition to the goals of the city's community forest management plan. Save the Bay is ready and willing to partner with the city in bringing urban greening projects to life and we urge a commitment to direct funding and staff resources to projects in East San Jose and other underinvestigated, under-invested parts of the city. Through the upcoming roadmap and budget processes, you'll have the opportunity to focus San Jose's recovery on multi-benefit projects that will improve quality of life, the environment, and public health. We urge the inclusion of broad urban greening goals in the city's upcoming resilience work and look forward to collaborating with you and other organizations to achieve this. Thank you.
Paola.
Good afternoon, mayor Liccardo and city council members. My name is Paola Mondragon and I work with Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. Um, we are part of the five organizations that make up the Cisa Puebla Collective and we support the mayor's proposal to accelerate prevention efforts to address back rent debt for families in San Jose. Since the start of the pandemic, Amigos de Guadalupe has dispersed over $4 million in rental assistance to our local community. And although helping families cover rent has been helpful, it does not address the systemic inequities that of access to permanent housing that our community faces. Home ownership is a key to upward mobility and we need to invest in long-term preservation of affordable housing. I urge this, um, council to also explore diverting some funding to provide the community to purchase housing properties instead of just renting. Thank you.
Scott Reese, Local 393.
Thank you. My name is Scott Reese. I am a business agent with Local 393. Um, I'd also like to speak, uh, to the request, uh, for a, a vote in favor of the manager's budget agenda on the basis of Arena, Arenas, excuse me, Esparza, and Carrasco's memo. Um, it's, uh, I think it's very obvious that, um, this wage theft is, is running rampant. It's out of control, especially during this COVID times. So I, I would encourage everyone to vote, uh, in favor of this as well as the inclusion of the public works language in the existing wage theft policy. Thank you.
Forrest Peterson.
Honorable council members, the mayor, my name is Dr. Forrest Peterson. I'm a staff researcher with the Center for Integrated Facility Engineering at Stanford School of Engineering. I'm speaking for the, for Stanford and with the Wage Theft Coalition. I'm also a laborer by trade and I still carry a laborers' union card. My comments are in support of the memo by council members Esparza, Arenas, and Carrasco. Please take the Responsible Construction Ordinance off the backlog. This is council policy priority number 16. Please add public works to the existing wage theft policy. And also please provide a budget increase for staffing in the Office of Equality Assurance, which is your labor agency, and to develop the pilot co-enforcement project with the county of, the county's OLLC, which is their labor agency to provide outreach, education, and support to workers and businesses. And then something I want to, I want to talk about very quickly is that, uh, back in 2019, the city of San Jose, uh, Sam Liccardo and, uh, council members, uh, council member Hermanas, uh, awarded a commendation to the Center for Integrated Facilities Engineering and, uh, the Kamagi, uh, professor of engineering, uh, Dr. Fisher, uh, came down to city hall with, uh, now Dr. Anthony Kinslow, who, who, uh, was a, a huge fan and looked up to, uh, council member Jones. now Dr. Anthony Kinslow, who was a huge fan and looked up to Councilmember Jones. And that commendation, you know, I know these commendations are given out, but when Dr. Fisher brought that commendation back to Stanford, that happened to be the day that the, the board that runs the center was meeting. People corporate heads had flown in from all around the world and Dr. Fisher carried that, that commendation over his head when he walked back into the room. We brought him over during the lunch break. It's still the only artifact that we've been awarded.
Louise Auerhon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Louise Auerhon from Working Partnerships. Thank you for introducing this item. This year's budget, this moment is your chance to put San Jose on a new path. Building back better, whatever the Congress does, we can build back better right here in San Jose. So I'm excited to support the memo by council members Asparza, Arenas and Carrasco that takes the first steps to put us on that new path towards greater equity, economic justice, and community inclusion and voice. I urge you to support their memo, especially item B on city recruitment and retention, so we can really get our city services up to where they should be. And item C, protecting workers and preventing wage theft. Now you heard from me on wage theft last week, so to go a little more into item B. We all know that the city for decades has had a persistent problem with filling vacancies, recruiting workers, and keeping workers. And a lot of this is the legacy of more than a decade of frankly, not just disrespect, but attacks on city workers. The city has been working to turn that around. I know that HR and other departments have been working very hard. But there's really a need for a much more focused and comprehensive effort on how do we make sure that these vacancies are filled so that all of our neighborhoods throughout the city get the services they need? And that the city itself is really providing good careers to our local residents, families supporting career jobs. So this memo provides the first step to figuring that out and I urge you to support it today. Thank you.
Claudia Damiani.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Claudia Damiani. I work with Regilution and we are part of the Cisepuela Collective. We support the mayor's proposal to invest in a more climate resilient future, especially to help our most vulnerable families impacted by COVID and historically have lived in areas redlined, which are at the higher risk of climate disaster. We support implementation of the Coyote Valley Open Space Plan that will directly benefit small, bipoc farmers who have been left behind from access to their own farmland. Since the beginning of the pandemic, Regilution and the Cisepuela Collective have made it out of priority to provide local organic produce grown by these small farmers to the most vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Ken Vion.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Quinn Wong with ICAN. We work with Vietnamese children and families. I am a member of the nonprofit Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition that works to advance racial justice and equity in our community. We signed a real coalition letter that addressed multiple issues from a racial equity perspective and support the proposal by council members Arenas, Asparza, and Carrasco to combat the wage theft and bring equity to PRNS, program pricing and capital expenditure. I want to urge the city council to invest resources in addressing mental health issues from a prevention perspective. I want to emphasize that culturally effective mental health awareness and prevention programs require a lot more than just handing out a flyer or securing a social media reach. It takes a lot to create safe space in small group settings where people can come together to share, feel heard, respected, and validated before they would open up to share their fear, concerns, their pain, their wounds, and the barriers that prevent them from accessing services. We want to build a two-way communication between the Vietnamese community and the city and very much appreciate the strategies called, that called out in Councilmember Mayhan's memo. City should understand prioritize community needs, set goals, track the city's performance, and be held accountable for results. We hope Councilmember Mayhan's recommendations will be needed and look forward to building a partnership with the San Jose City. Thank you so much.
John Tucker, APSME.
Hi, my name is John Tucker and on behalf of APSME, MEF Local 101, the city's frontline workers' union. I'm here today to support the Essential Workers Council and their call for a budget that reflects San Jose's core values. Like others, I want to thank Councilmembers Carrasco, Arenas, and Asparza for their memo that reflects these values. APSME MEF is urging the council to vote yes on that memo and I wanted to highlight specifically item B, which is the, the filling of these vacancies. For years and years and years, we've had 600, 700, 800 vacancies in the city. And those vacancies are just the budgeted vacancies. That doesn't even take into consideration the population increase over the last 10, 20, 30 years in some cases and all the additional positions that should be budgeted that are, that are not. But everything depends on addressing this issue. All of the council priorities, all of the residents' service needs and the needs of all the others expressed here this afternoon are all dependent on having people in the roles in order to carry out the direction and perform the actual work of everything that, that we're discussing. This is a paramount importance. So again, APSME MEF urge you to vote yes on this memo and, and let's get serious about filling these vacancies so that our city can get back to work. Thank you.
Mylin Pham.
Good afternoon, my name is Mylin Pham and I'm the CEO for AASC, Asian American Center of Santa Clara County. And I'm also a member of the nonprofit Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition that works to advance racial justice in our community. As a member of the REAL Coalition, we support focusing resources on continued pandemic relief, wealth building, health equity, housing, and homelessness, nonprofit sustainability, and reimagining public safety. Because there are the areas that we believe will best advance racial justice and recovery of those who the pandemic has hardest hit. Thank you to the mayor and council member for your vision, passion, and your love to our city. And we hope that you will do the right thing. Thank you for this opportunity to provide the public comment.
Bria Miles.
Hello. My name is Bria Miles and I'm here in support of the Santa Clara County Wage Theft Coalition. As members have said already, we would like to request that the council vote in favor of a manager, manager's budget addenda based on council member, council members that Anna's Asparza and Carrasco's memo that includes more resources for the OEA's Labor Agency, the responsible construction ordinance, and a pilot collaboration with the Fair Workplace Collaborative. And that also includes a priority the council previously voted for that included a responsible construction ordinance and the inclusion of public works in the existing wage theft policy. Wage theft has been on a rise since, since COVID-19. Sunnyville just unanimously passed a responsible construction ordinance at Mountain, and the Mountain View staff are drafting one. A manager's budget addenda is not new since the council voted last year in March in favor of manager's budget addenda proposed by council members Adanas and Asparza on a different subject. We request a vote in favor of the manager budget addenda on the basis of the Adanas, Asparza, and Carrasco memo and the priorities the council previously voted so that it can move forward to another vote in June. Thank you.
John Pedigo.
Hi, I am Father John Pedigo. I'm with Catholic Charities and I'm a member of REAL. I want to thank Mayor Liccardo for addressing the continued food need and the many other equity-focused initiatives in the budget. As a member of REAL, Catholic Charities also supports the proposals by council members Arenas, Asparza, and Carrasco to combat wage theft and bring equity to, to the PRNS program, pricing, and capital expenditures. In my work with Catholic Charities as a priest, I go to many Catholic parishes in San Jose. I meet with pastors, community leaders, and folks working in food distribution efforts. Vehicle food distributions in parishes and family resource centers, community markets in high-impact areas, hot meals and home deliveries. This is what we do. We're seeking, we're seeing an uptick in numbers of those coming for support. Food lines are longer and sometimes we run out of food before we can serve everyone. It goes without saying that the vast majority of those we serve are people of color, most of whom are front-facing, low-wage essential workers who depend on food support to make ends meet. Thank you for this opportunity to provide input. Thank you.
Jeremy Baruth.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo and members of the City Council. This is Jeremy Baruth, Policy and Organizing Manager with Amigos de Guadalupe Center for Justice and Empowerment. We are also part of the Cisepuela Collective. We support the mayor's proposal to invest in quick build apartment units and motel conversions for affordable housing, especially to help those families most impacted by COVID and historically have lived in areas redlined and overlooked for ongoing city investment. And appreciate the provision to direct staff to use an equity lens to address longstanding inequities that our communities have faced for decades. I also want to voice our support for the proposal for the School of Arts and Culture to receive a $1 million match grant to acquire a mostly vacant building across the street from the Mexican Heritage Plaza. This project will expand SOAX's cultural impact with a new performance and rehearsal spaces, a theater and cafe, and bring a major behavioral health services provider to the Mayfair community throughout our equity partner. Gardner Healthcare. Success could be, could enable a dramatic increase in the number of families served by our two anchor institutions in East San Jose. We also support the proposals outlined in the memo from council members Carrasco, Arenas, and Asparza to implement the city's capacity to identify wage theft and hold employers to commit violations accountable. As well as proposals to change the pricing structures of PNRS programs to assess the cost of improvements to city facilities in high-needs areas. Thank you very much.
Beverly.
Hello, my name is Beverly Wailaka and I'm a Policy and Advocacy Intern at the African-American Community Service Agency. It's important that we address the police and concerns that we have voiced by public over the last several months. As you receive the recommendations for the reimagining public safety advisory committee, please use them to make decisions that best address the needs of our community and create a safe environment for all. I also support addressing mental illness on our streets with the formation of the Mobile Crisis Response Team. As research shows, a great deal of our unhoused populations struggle with mental health. I believe having a mental health response team could help to de-escalate crisis situations and stabilize citizens in need of professional mental health intervention. Thank you.
Elizabeth Kamya.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Elizabeth Kamya. I am the rep for IFPT Local 21. We represent 840 city workers here at the city. I am calling today to thank council members Asparza, Carrasco, and Arenas for wanting to staff up. It's really important that we staff up and make sure that we fill these gaps. These are gaps that cannot easily be filled with some level of expertise. These are empty seats that are getting left in City Hall for people to go work in other places for less work and more pay. Everything that the mayor outlined in his memo, none of that could be possible without the work of city staff. And so in order to achieve affordable housing, build and fill potholes to strengthen the infrastructure of the city, we must first strengthen that staff and that means investing in staff. And I've had three members this week, union members, call and quit. And this used to be a city that people would go to, to work and they were proud to work here. And we're losing talent and we're bleeding and now's our time to right the ship. Because the ship is sinking and in order to save it, we must invest in staff in order to deliver a great, amazing services to the residents who deserve it. So, thank you.
Kathy Tran.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Kathy Tran and I am with IFPT Local 21. I'm here to support the Essential Workers Council's call for a budget that uplifts working families. I want to say thank you to council members Asparza, Arenas, and Carrasco for their memo that reflects these values. I urge the council to vote yes on that memo, especially item B, improving city hiring and retention, and item C, preventing wage theft, which is a horrible and widespread crime. We have over 700 vacancies in the city and this understaffing crisis severely harms the city's ability to provide quality public services to our communities that need it the most. Sapping up is crucial to help us move San Jose forward to becoming a world-class employer with world-class services to support all of our diverse neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Kylie Clark.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. My name is Kylie Clark and I'm here today to speak on behalf of West Valley Community Services, a nonprofit serving thousands of residents of West Silicon Valley. Our agency supports the REAL Coalition's stance on the 2022 through 23 Mayor's March Budget Message, which is outlined in a letter sent to the council and signed by numerous nonprofits and allies. WVCS is a proud member of the REAL Coalition, serving as one of more than 125 organizations that have participated in the Coalition. The REAL Coalition and its members not only represent the strong and crucial nonprofit community of our county in San Jose, but also a wide cross-sector of identities, issue areas, and experiences. Because of this, the Coalition is an extremely credible source for gathering public input on the budget. The letter from the REAL Coalition represents the input and viewpoints of thousands of stakeholders and community members. The REAL Coalition supports focus on continued pandemic relief, wealth building, held equity, housing and homelessness, nonprofit sustainability, and reimagining public safety because these are the areas that we believe will best advance racial justice and recovery for those who have been hardest hit by the pandemic. Thank you to Mayor Liccardo for focusing on continued food needs, allocation of funding for the recovery task force in RIPS processes, and other equity-focused initiatives. WVCS and REAL also support the proposals by council members Arenas, Asparza, and Carrasco to combat wage theft and bring equity to the PRNS program, pricing, and capital expenditures. As I said, the input of the REAL Coalition represents the input of countless stakeholders and underrepresented community members. Please give weight and attention to these well-thought-out and carefully crafted comments on areas of the budget. Thank you very much and we really appreciate your support and dedication.
Jonathan Borca.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, good afternoon, afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jonathan Francisco Borca and I'd like to speak on Agenda Item 3.3. I grew up in, in East San Jose near the King and Story intersection where my late grandparents lived since the 1970s. Currently, I serve as the Deputy Director for the School of Arts and Culture, or La Plaza for short. And I'm a board member of local color, a woman-owned advocacy and arts nonprofit. I'm in support of the mayor's recommendation to allocate a $1 million match grant for La Plaza to acquire the building across the street on Allen Rock Avenue. This building has been ridden with vacancies over the past seven years, which has attracted graffiti and other unsafe activities that come with the lack of regular programming, services, and maintenance. The community in which the building is located, Mayfair, is in the late stages of gentrification. Property acquisition and ownership are inevitable and having a developer or owner that would not look out for the best interests of the surrounding communities can do irreparable harm for future generations. Supporting this initiative will lead to a dramatic increase in the number of families served by Gardner Health Services and La Plaza via family wellness services and cultural activities. Again, please support the mayor's recommendation to allocate a $1 million batch grant for La Plaza. This effort will help to preserve culture, provide equitable resources and programming, and it will safeguard the best interests of our communities. Thank you for your time. and it will safeguard the best interests of our communities. Thank you for your time.
Laverre Foster.
Hi, my name is Laverre Foster and I represent the African American Community Service Agency. And I'm also a member of the Real Coalition. I support the initiatives to develop homes for the unhoused and communities in need, especially in support of the Home Key Program. Also, the beautification of San Jose in our underserved communities is extremely important. Save the Bay has been doing a lot of work educating our communities regarding urban greenery. We absolutely need to commit to creating better, cleaner environments in our underserved communities. As it pertains to policing, I urge you to pay close attention to the recommendations that will come out of the Reimagining Public Safety Advisory Committee. The committee has worked incredibly hard on these recommendations and has received input from the public. The recommendations that come out of this committee can help make a much-needed change here in San Jose. And finally, black wealth building is a necessity. I've said it here before and will continue to say it. We need initiatives that will support our black residents, whether it is through support in small businesses, affordable housing, homeownership, healthcare, and childcare. It takes all of us to make the change that positively impacts our community. Thank you.
Chami Cron.
Yes, hi, thank you. And we're here to show support for Create TV's new space called Open San Jose. This new space will not only host the city's future meeting needs, but will also provide low rent to support activities to a diverse group or organizations. Chop 6 Alley Art is one member of this group. My name is Chami Cron. I'm the Executive Director. We highlight Southeast Asian art and culture and serve low-income families and young artists, especially the Vietnamese community. Open San Jose truly addresses equity, access, and inclusion. So with affordable low rent, it gives us equity to access the technology and space. And now we're included to be in that conversation, the larger conversation, to change systems and policies and have an opportunity to be heard. We can't wait to open our beautiful art gallery there. Please support this project for the long term as well, so Open San Jose can be open beyond your terms. All of the partners at Open San Jose have committed ourselves to long-term to provide a welcoming space for all to create, activate, and collaborate. As they say, if you build it, they will come. So, thank you Create TV for building it. We have come. And now we need you, our council, to vote yes to support the Mayor's March Budget for this item. Also, since I'm here, I would also like to show support for the Mexican Heritage Plaza to purchase, for the million dollar, to purchase a property across the street. So, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Samina Usman.
Hello, my name is Samina Usman. I'm the Senior Government Relations Coordinator for the Council on American Islamic Relations. And we are a member of the Wage Theft Coalition. I am appreciative of Councilmember Maya Asparza's Carrasco and Arenas's memo that references, you know, concerns regarding the fact that wage theft has not been addressed and that we, that we have a backlog of people who have not had their, their complaints addressed. And, you know, honestly, it really sends a bad message to companies who are properly treat, are treating their employees properly and paying them properly. It, you know, if, if other companies are able to get away with bad, you know, wage, with wage theft practices, then, you know, what incentive does it have for people who are doing things the right way? So, again, we really need to make this a priority and, and put this, you know, at the forefront like we've been trying to for, for quite some time. And we also want to make sure that public works is also included in that, that we have protections as well. And also, I just wanted to comment on, you know, like Father John Pettigo had mentioned, we are seeing an uptick of, of people, community members who are in need of support, in need of food. I'm part of the Support Life Foundation and have been seeing that food distribution needs are always increasing. And so I want that to be a priority to, to make sure that we create avenues to support our community, to create equity. And so I definitely want to reference that. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Edgar Ochoa.
Hello, Mr. Liccardo, Mayor's Office, council members, and everyone else in attendance. My name's Edgar Ochoa and I'm privileged enough to fill the position of Senior Manager for the Community Engagement Program at the Mexican Heritage Plaza. I'm here today in support of Mayor Liccardo's recommendation to allocate the $1 million match grant for the Plaza in order to acquire the building directly across the street on Allen Rock Avenue. I grew up in East San Jose and I've interacted with people from all walks of life. But during my time in East San Jose, I was lucky enough to be surrounded by its rich Mexican culture along with the various different immigrant communities in East San Jose. The importance of the Plaza expanding as a community hub while remaining an anchor organization in East San Jose is crucial in order to continue offering home away from home for the local community. And I'm one of the clear examples of someone who at a young age could have used the support of an organization like the Plaza. During my teenage years, my father was incarcerated and deported. And in turn, that sent me down a wrong path. I grew up with a lack of a positive father figure. I was getting into trouble and interacting with people who were not good for my personal growth. And even though I wasn't going down the best path, I was lucky enough to interact with mentors and people within organizations like the Plaza who helped keep me on a good track, and their support has helped me get to where I am today. So now I'm lucky enough to serve the same community that I come from, and I want to ensure that the Plaza continues serving this community in the decades to come, because there are other children, teenagers, and families who have the same stories. And with your support, we can ensure that they have a positive and supportive environment at their doorstep. So, again, I ask that you please support the mayor's recommendation to allocate the $1 million match grant, and I thank you for your time.
Andrea Portillo, Somos Mayfair.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Andrea Portillo. I'm the Community Organizing and Policy Manager with Somos Mayfair, and we are part of the CCEP with the collective. We strongly support the mayor's proposal to invest in homelessness prevention strategies, prioritize affordable housing, and the accelerated prevention efforts to address back rent debt for those families most impacted by COVID. We also support the Arenas, Arenas, Asparza, Carrasco memo that focuses on hiring city staff so they can implement the critical housing priorities outlined in the mayor's proposal. We've been working on addressing displacement for years alongside our community and have partnered with the City Housing Department to develop policies like Local Tenant Preferences and the Community Opportunity to Purchase Act. We appreciate the investment in permanent community-centered housing solutions that address the needs of our most impacted folks. Solutions that address the systemic inequities of access to permanent housing are key. Again, we really want to thank and appreciate the investment in long-term preservation of affordable housing and want to highlight how crucial the need for, for this, these solutions are. Thank you.
Brett Davis.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Brett Davis and I am a Glazer construction worker in Santa Clara County and a Santa Clara County resident. I have been doing this career and trade for over 18 years, right out of high school when I graduated from Pioneer High School. I'm here today to support the Essential Workers Council in their call for a budget that reflects San Jose's values. I have seen firsthand the various issues workers in San Jose fight with corporations and bad construction companies. So I would like to give some hope to those families that go through these situations, especially Item B on the Manager, Manager's Budget Addendum Memo written by Councilmembers Asparza, Arenas, and Carrasco, improving city hiring and retention. This item will help us figure out what's needed to reverse that trend and move our city forward to become a world-class employer, providing good jobs filled by our diverse residents and making sure all neighborhoods can get the services they need to thrive. San Jose needs a strategy to be able to keep good-quality residents of San Jose working in San Jose. I would also like to mention Item C of that memo, preventing wage theft. When corporations and bad construction companies steal from their workers, it affects not just the workers themselves, but their families and their entire community. So I would like to thank the council members Asparza, Arenas, and Carrasco in writing that memo, and I urge the council to vote yes on that memo and the manager's budget addendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Will Smith. I'm a business agent for IBW Local 332. I'm also a resident in D7. Thank you to councilmember Asparza, Carrasco, and Arenas for their memo. I urge this council to vote yes on that memo, especially Item B, improving city hiring and retention, and Item C, preventing wage theft. Please support Item B to start building towards a comprehensive, equity-centered recruitment and retention strategy for cities' vacancies. Over a decade of disinvestment in our city workforce and attacks on city workers have left many essential neighborhood services severely understaffed. That means that many of our San Jose neighborhoods, especially working-class neighborhoods of people of color and immigrants, do not get the core services that they need. This item will help us figure out what's needed to reverse that trend and move our city forward to become a world-class employer, providing good jobs filled by our diverse residents and making sure all neighborhoods can get the service that they need to thrive. Please support Item C to protect and empower working people, uplift responsible businesses who pay their workers fairly, and prevent and prosecute wage theft. Wage theft is widespread and is a heinous crime. When unscrupulous corporations steal from their workers, it affects the workers and their families and communities. Millions of dollars are being stolen from our San Jose families, with the hardest impacts falling on workers of color, immigrant workers, women workers. Please, I urge this council to support the proposal. Let's listen to working people, not just big business, moving towards recovery. That includes all of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Diana Crumady, SVBC. Diana, you, you, you're using an older version of Zoom. So if you could please sign off Zoom, update your software, or call in. You can speak. We have 16 speakers to go, so you should have enough time to update the software and get right back on. David Beany.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Speaking today for the Santa Clara and San Bernardo Counties Building and Construction Trades Council in support of the memo from councilmembers Arena, Asparza, and Carrasco. This memo contains an important prompt to refocus the city staff on city priority number 16, the Wage Theft Prevention Policy. In addition, it addresses staffing for the Office of Equality Assurance to ensure that the city's responsibilities regarding wage theft are upheld. The memo also highlights the need for a pilot program between the Office of Equality Assurance and our county's Office of Labor Standards Enforcement. A partnership like this would shine a light in some of the darkest corners of wage theft, which you've heard a lot about today. Worker protections are a critical function of government at all levels, and I urge support for directing the city manager to produce the requested manager's budget addendum. Thank you.
Gabby. Gabby, go ahead. Okay, we're going to move on to La Sana Dominguez with Latino Education.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is La Sana Dominguez. I grew up in East San Jose and attended Independence High School. I am currently the Vice President of Strategic Planning and Development for the Latino Education Advancement Foundation. I call in today to thank the mayor and express my full support for the mayor's budget message to support the Eastside Education Initiative. Right now, 76% of East San Jose students enter middle school and high school behind in English Language Arts, mathematics, and science, leaving them ill-prepared for success. In addition, parents and faculty are overwhelmed by the prospect of filling existing academic gaps without adequate resources. The Eastside Education Initiative will promote a college and career readiness culture by engaging Eastside students and families to promote parent and student voices, provide new programs to accelerate learning to improve course subject proficiency and A through G completion rates, provide college and career-aligned programming beginning in the sixth grade to increase enrollment and persistent in two-year and four-year colleges, and advocate for equitable funding in East San Jose schools. If something doesn't change, economic mobility will continue to be out of reach for our youth of East San Jose leading to displacement from this region. Again, I fully support the mayor's budget message to support the Eastside Education Initiative, and thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment.
Sylvia.
Hola, buenas tardes. ¿Si me escuchas?
Yes, I can hear you. Hold on so we can get the interpreter. We need to switch the audio over for the interpretation.
¿Si me escuchas?
Sí, señora. Le escuchamos. Adelante.
Vamos a hallar un intérprete.
I'm here now.
Señora Sylvia, si me escucha, puede empezar a hablar, por favor.
Okay, go ahead.
Hola.
Señor alcalde, Sam Ricardo y concejales. Gracias por darnos un espacio para explicarnos y compartir nuestras necesidades. Mi nombre es Sylvia Martínez. Soy parte del programa Trabajo para crecer.
Hold on, I'm not hearing the interpreter.
Okay, good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo and council members. Good afternoon, Mayor. Can you hear me? Can, can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, so good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on this. Sí, señora. Adelante.
Okay, continue.
Sí, mi nombre es Sylvia.
My name is Sylvia Martinez. And I'm a member of the program.
Nos capacita para empezar.
Grammar to grow. This is giving us the opportunity to grow. I graduated from this program and I'm interested in starting my own business in the near future. This program has taught me
Por lo cual me siento bendecido.
The ability to start my own business and I'm glad to have the opportunity to have participated in this program. It has helped me to develop professionally. It has helped me and my family to have the possibility to be self-employed and to generate income so that I can better off my life.
De trabajo.
I think the fact that the mayor is trying to create jobs for all kinds of people here is going to be able to give us the support that we need in the city. The fact that I think the city should get with the collective system so that we can have the opportunity to have these jobs. And for those that don't meet the requirements, so that we can have a career opportunities and we can have that opportunity. Thank you, Sam Ricardo and all the council members for having the opportunity to listen to my comment.
Matthew.
Matthew.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Matthew Reed from Silicon Valley at home. Pleased to have this opportunity to share thoughts. Want to speak to the mayor's commitment to addressing the pressing needs of unhoused or communities, as well as an ongoing commitment to homeless prevention. It's very important that the, the message calls for expansion of available resources to support humane responses to the immediate crisis that folks are in and sustained investment in stable, long-term solutions with permanent homes. I'd also like to note the inclusion of the Affordable Housing Navigator. When I was not funded last week and the barriers to affordable housing helped developers work through the building and permit side of the process, we think that's an important step. Also appreciate bringing the yes-in-God's-backyard policy back, back into the discussion. We've seen those opportunities be missed, and we think it's an important step forward. Not in the message, but important is the continued commitment to ensuring that we're building affordable housing around the Not in the message, but important is the continued commitment to ensuring that we're building affordable housing around the city. Coming soon, the council is going to be, the policy changes in North San Jose. There is a twenty percent affordable requirement in North San Jose. We expect this to be coming soon, and it's an example of a place where we can't afford to build yet another exclusive neighborhood and fail to provide integrated opportunities for people of all incomes and abilities. Thank you for your time.
Wesley Cox?
Hello, my name is Wesley Cox, and I represent the African-American Community Service Agency. Greetings to the council and the mayor. We support the childcare section of the Equitable Recovery Outline. After almost two years of virtual and hybrid learning, many children are behind in their educational development. I think the budget for childcare innovations can improve the influence and availability of holistic childcare in people's lives and can better improve the child development resources we have in San Jose. We hope we can have more affordable childcare in addition to after-school tutoring programs. In addition, the Small Business Support Section of the Equitable Recovery Outline is also important to us. After almost two years of COVID-19 mandates on businesses and economic downturn, many small businesses are struggling to stay afloat and are scraping by until we head toward post-pandemic. The economic incentive for small businesses will in turn help to create jobs and revitalize communities that were destroyed during COVID-19, improving small business development in San Jose, especially in Black and Brown communities. Thank you.
Martha? Martha?
Sí, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marta González.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Marta González. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor. This is Marta González.
Go ahead.
Alcalde y miembros del consejo de la ciudad.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. My name is Marta González. And I just graduated for this collective, si se puede. I would like to start my own business at the beginning of the I want to be able to do like a childcare, and I'm glad that you, Mayor, are trying to invest a million dollars to help these small businesses. I would like to request that you please support this. And also that if we can have up to five to ten thousand dollars so that we can start this business, many of our families that participate in this program, si se puede, we lost our incomes during the pandemic, and we need to have the opportunity to have this income. We are still struggling to provide to our families, and I'm hoping that you can allocate these resources to the community and our families. And also, we're trying to see if the County of Santa Clara can coordinate with the city in these efforts. If we can help, if we can get the assistance so that we can have these childcare centers, we're here to support. So can you please do your best to support the childcare services that we try to provide?
Charles Howard?
Charles Howard?
Okay, you can hear me now, I guess.
Yes.
I have been interested in the recent increase in interest, apparently, in the government here of metrics of progress and success, and I noticed that Matt Mahan has a general series of proposals that are all have measurable improvements possible. And I think that's essential for the city. I have a long, I've been in San Jose since sixty-four, when I came here with IBM, and I retired here about twenty-five years ago. And the notion that something is measurable is very important. So any manager who is running a business or any employee is doing a job can make up something that indicates good progress. And the problem with San Jose is that we have problems, years of good work, mistakes, and that situation is going to continue forever. The homeless situation will continue forever, because if we succeed and do well, it will be a magnet for other people, and they will come. This happened to San Diego fifty years ago. So the thing is, like Mahan proposes, is to keep measuring how you're doing with what you have, in particular staffing, the staffing problem that I
Karong Kean?
Hi, hi there. My name is Karong Kean, and I'm a longtime resident here in San Jose. I'm speaking in support of councilmember Mahan's memo to increase the accountability of the government, of our local government. I think I've been, I myself is a longtime marathon runner. I'm running through all the trails around here in San Jose. It's very sad to see in last, you know, ten or fifteen years, we start to see a lot of homeless shelters and homeless camps around our beautiful trails. So I think the city has been trying to solve this problem, but we haven't seen a substantial progress on this. So I'm fully in support of councilmember Mahan's memo, increase the accountability and create something measurable, and make this incentive to be the goal for the race of all the government-elected officials. So I urge the councilmember both yes for that memo, and thank you. You guys are doing a wonderful job, and thank you for the time. Thank you.
Carl Salas? Or Carl Salas?
Okay, sorry, you can hear me now. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I woke up yesterday, the same potholes, horrible potholes, that have been in front of my house for the last eight years. And I went home at lunch, and I have a brand-new street, and I just wanted to thank the council and the mayor. You're doing your job, and I just can't thank you enough. I know that the many challenges you have financially and policy, but getting the potholes fixed is probably your second biggest priority, and I want to thank you. But really, the reason I came is because the first priority is security and safety. And the mayor's downtown's foot patrol is so important, not only to the image of our city, but to the safety of the people who want to live there and invest there. The downtown is a tremendous financial engine waiting to happen, and with just a little bit of support, the vision of our very sensitive and restrained police on foot patrol downtown, it would be a tremendous, I think, income generator for our city. Thank you very much.
Tracy Weatherby?
Good afternoon. This is Tracy Weatherby with Second Harvest of Silicon Valley, and we are deeply grateful for the support that the mayor and the council have provided through the labor of the San Jose Conservation Corps, helping with boxing in our warehouses. We're still providing food to four hundred thousand people every month, sixty percent more than pre-pandemic, and not seeing any decline at all. We provide that food directly and through three hundred partners. And as the major hub for access to charitable food in our community, the support of the Corps is crucial to getting out still nearly double the amount of food we're providing. While we've greatly increased the volunteers, the community has been great. The need for boxing is well beyond our volunteer capacity at this point, especially as the virus waxes and wanes. We hope over the next year to reduce the need for boxing if the virus stays in Bay, and we will train our partners to run client choice distributions again. But this use of the San Jose Conservation Corps is a real win-win in terms of creating job opportunities for young people. We've hired a couple already as permanent employees and helping with food insecurity in our community. San Jose constituents make up the largest population of food insecure residents in the county. And also, we share your objective to sign up people for CalFresh. We have a staff of eighteen that try and sign people up for CalFresh, but many, many people don't qualify. We strongly encourage the city council to support continued city funding to address food insecurity, and we're really heartened by the strengthening relationships with the county to ensure that food insecurity is addressed in our community. City, county, and CBO partnerships are crucial to this long-term solution. Thank you so much for your support.
Sherry Axis Neighborhood Watch? Sherry? Okay, I'm gonna move on to David Peterson. David?
How about now?
Go ahead.
Okay, you can hear me.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for this opportunity. I support the many ideals outlined in the mayor's budget, and thank you for the thoughtful list of broad priorities. These six help set a great direction to work toward. Measureability and accountability will aid in assuring priorities that stay on track. As outlined in the memorandum of councilmembers Arenas, Asparza, and Carrasco, as well as Davis, I too support adding sworn officer positions. Our current force does amazing and exemplary service. More are needed. I also fully believe councilmember Mann's memorandum is crucial to consider and implement measurements and accountability to each action outlined by and throughout the budget. There's so much to consider for all things post-COVID. A return to normal, as we all know it, is very unlikely. Life around us has all changed too much. Therefore, as stewards of our city, and in this case specifically our tax dollars in the budget, I urge all councilmembers to support councilmember Mann's ideals behind measures and accountability. As you review services and the limits in funds, I urge a general investment in the entire community, all people and businesses, nonprofits, and for-profits. Review the importance of the free enterprise system and do not rely solely on hiring in new or filling open city positions. Perhaps it's time to reset some jobs and close others, maybe to match those priorities you've outlined. I urge you to develop opportunities for small businesses. Educate, educate, educate. Thank you all for your continued service and the amazing time that you take to listen, week in, week out, day in and day out. Thank you very much.
Juan Estrada?
Hi, my name is Juan Estrada. I appreciate hearing speakers today advocating funding for many important items. I am speaking via two separate roles today. The first is with Green foothills, which has protected open space, farmlands, and natural resources for sixty years. I support the comments made by the speaker from Save the Bay. In the midst of a devastating pandemic, Bay Area residents were also faced with the difficult realities of climate change over the past two years. I support the inclusion of projects spanning many areas of climate resilience. This includes support for urban greening in addition to the goals of the city's Community Forest Management Plan. In addition, I urge a commitment to direct funding and staff resources to projects in East San Jose and other under-invested parts of the city. I'm speaking separately today as an East San Jose resident, a father of two, and a volunteer community leader for over a decade. I support the calls for equity, opportunity, and resources for those in need. Again, I appreciate speakers noting the need for many important items. I had my voice to that course today by highlighting the need for public library funding. As a child, I would visit the library multiple times weekly for resources my family lacked. As you're aware, kids, adults, and seniors currently do the same, especially during this time when many are suffering hardships. As a community leader, I was also fortunate to be able to use libraries to convene important community meetings and look forward to doing so again. I ask that you fully fund our libraries in order to support equity and opportunity for all of our residents. Significant pass cuts to library services should be fully restored so that the libraries can open it at full strength, ready to serve the community as we recover from the pandemic. Doing so provides all our residents with more opportunities to succeed. Thank you.
Jeff Boisier?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Jeff Boisier. I'm a resident in Council District 10 and member of the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. I would like to address the pedestrian and safety innovations portion of the Public Safety Section of Mayor Licardo's March Budget Memo. I'd like to ask you that you make traffic safety improvements a higher priority in this year's budget. Please increase the number of high-priority quick-build projects on our highest-risk roadways, beyond that which was proposed in Mayor Licardo's March Budget Message. Traffic enforcement is important, but an equal, if not more valuable, component to improving safety in our streets is to make the necessary physical improvements that will reduce overall traffic speeds of our roads. Speed kills, but if we narrow lanes, sharpen corners, and put in protected bike lanes, among other things, people drive more slowly and lives are saved. The city is working on this, but we are not moving nearly fast enough. In fact, we are moving in the wrong direction. Statistics presented in the December Vision Zero Task Force meeting showed that traffic-related deaths are already running at a record rate that is on track to exceed 2021's record total. Traffic-related deaths are about one-point-five times the amount of homicides in a year in our city. Obviously, neither are desirable, but it's important to look at how our city leadership invests in each. Public safety includes traffic safety. Reducing speeds through physical infrastructure improvements will improve safety and save lives. Quick-build projects provide a cost-effective way to do just that. Councilmember Matt Mahan has recommended accountability and measuring success through performance metrics. Well, I can't think of a more easily quantifiable metric than annual traffic crashes and fatalities to which we can set and track measurable goals. Applying this to cost-effective measures to improve our streets should be straightforward. The need to act boldly on this is now. Please make traffic safety improvements a higher priority in this year's budget. Thank you.
Gabby? Gabby? I see you're unmuted.
Hello?
Go ahead.
¿Hola?
Yeah, hold on. Go ahead.
Buenas tardes, alcalde y miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Zoeza Gabriela Del Real. Yo trabajo con Betty Lucian y somos parte del colectivo Si Se Puede.
Hold on, I'm not hearing the translator. I'm not hearing the interpreter.
Lo siento, moment, un momentito. Vamos a esperar por el intérprete. Gracias por su paciencia.
Gracias.
Okay, interpreter, can you try again? We're still not hearing you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Adelante. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I work with Betty Lucian. My name is Gabriela Del Real and part of the collective Si Se Puede. When we lost our income during the pandemic, the great family services, we started preparing, training families so that we start businesses in the industry of food and also childcare. The collective calls this program growth programs, and it talks about our families in the community. Recently, many families have been graduated, and they desire, and it's a dream that they want to realize, to start their own business. It would be very good for the community and the city to associate with the collective Si Se Puede to grow. Hello? Hello? So that our program can grow on and provide income to so many efforts that are helping families without income. Thank you for listening to our voice.
Alex Shore?
Hey, this is Alex Shore with Catalyze SV. So many great things in this budget message. One I wanted to highlight that we talked about last year, and I'm glad it's back and continues to be a priority for the mayor, is the "Yes in God's Backyard," which would enable construction for housing on parking lots or surplus land for local religious communities. Appreciate that emphasis and the focus on community engagement. Appreciate that emphasis and the focus on community engagement related to it. That's all for today. Thanks.
Caller nine-nine-two-zero.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Wonderful. Hello, this is Diana Crumby with Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. I'm the San Clara County Advocate. I wanted to speak out today to address traffic violence. The level of traffic violence continues to skyrocket in San Jose with fifteen killed in vehicle crashes, including eight pedestrians since the beginning of this year. Sadly, there's been fifteen residents lost, and we are only in the eleventh week of this year. They say that insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome. In hopes to bring Vision Zero closer to its goal and provide a different outcome, I urge you to make safer streets a priority and put even more money into building safe streets. Councilmember Foley and Peralos began each Vision Zero Task Force meeting acknowledging the loss of another resident due to traffic violence as a way to encourage us and remind us all that about those that are affected and those that we continue to lose as we try to get it right. We understand the complexity of balancing a budget with many important priorities and appreciate the city and the mayor's efforts to increase funding for safe streets. Given the amount of traffic violence, we encourage the mayor to go even further. San Jose needs to put even more money into building safe streets, approximately a hundred million annually above the city's existing funding, which would cover the city's bike plan, Vision Zero improvements, complete streets projects, and the trail networks. Also, pavement management is a good way to make streets safer, but we also need to aggressively pursue other projects as we identify them in the city's Vision Zero plan. The pavement management program is a great way to re-stripe streets, however, it is too slow. We need to fund staff capacity to avoid deferrals and excite the pavement maintenance program. Thank you, and please make safe streets a priority in the budget.
David Noel.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I'm David Noel, President of the Erickson Neighborhood Association. I think the mayor for his budget message, I'd like to advocate for the following items to help all neighborhoods across our city. In addition to the proposed pedestrian and traffic innovations, restore the traffic enforcement unit. Provide funding for quick-build traffic circles to reduce car spinning donuts at wide intersections. Restore the Responsible Landlord Engagement Initiative. Provide funding for community emergency response team training to leverage volunteers to be prepared for disasters, especially considering how overdue we are for a large earthquake. Extend the beautify San Jose encampment management team and ensure that we hold the county accountable for providing the resources they are responsible to provide. In closing, whatever priorities are ultimately funded, I support councilmember Mahan's proposal to create measurable metrics, keep them updated on a website dashboard, and hold city management accountable to meet them. Thank you.
My last hand up so far, unless somebody else raises their hand, is somebody who looks like they already spoke.
They were in the bathroom last.
No, you already spoke, Michael, so I'm gonna move on. Back to the council. Who's running this now? Vice Mayor Jones, please, I think you're online. If you could chair the meeting.
Okay.
And I can tell you the speakers that we have with the hands raised in the chambers is Cohen and Mahan.
Okay, I will go with councilmember Cohen first.
Actually, the mayor's back. Let's let the mayor start.
All right. I was trying to stall, but.
Did you tell any good jokes, Vice Mayor?
No, I didn't have any good ones.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for jumping in. My apologies for the delay. I ran outside and heard in the restroom that things had resolved, so that's why I ran back out. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the members of the community who came to speak. I appreciate the passion, so many advocates for everything from traffic safety at a time when we're seeing so much horrible tragedy out in our streets to efforts to improve childcare access and address our homelessness crisis and many, many other important needs. I also want to thank my colleagues for the very good ideas. I was going to take a moment to address at least my perspective on several of the memoranda that have been offered. We have many, so I'll try to do so a bit succinctly. I really want to thank Jim Shannon and his team, Bonnie Dong, and many other members of his team who have been working so hard and will continue working really hard between now and June to make this budget process as painless as it possibly can be. This is an incredible undertaking. It really takes the whole organization. We know that budgets are critical. They define our priorities and help us to clarify exactly our objectives and how we can address the most critical needs in our community. And it's important. So I appreciate their many long nights and weekends that they invest in their collaboration in this effort. And I also want to thank the City Manager's Office, Jennifer and Lee, and everybody on City Manager's team. You know, I mentioned the input from the community. It's so important. You know, I continue to hear ideas every day. It seems I'm out in the community. And most recently, it was a Sunday. I was at the Mexica New Year, and Casey, the executive director over at Bellion Lucian, approached me and said, hey, you know, a lot of folks at the Sisapuerto Collective are kind of frustrated that when we have celebrations of indigenous community here in San Jose, we always start with a land acknowledgement, and then we charge them for the use of the park, which I can understand the irony there and appreciate that. And so they say, hey, you should just waive fees if, you know, if we've got a celebration of Wacmo'olani and want to have a commemoration of some kind, or in case of Mexica New Year, many tribes that we waive fees at parks. You know, that's actually not a bad idea. Probably wouldn't cost much. I have no idea if it's legal under Prop 187 in the California Constitution, so I guess we could take a look at that and find out. So anyway, I'd ask that the maker of the motion might consider doing just that, just have us find out whether or not that's lawful. And if it is, and I suspect it will be a fairly small ticket item in this budget, I think that would appropriately show respect and be consistent with what I think we all do as elected officials in acknowledging our forbears on this land. There are many good ideas in the memoranda that have been submitted. Let me just, I can't address a few of them briefly. First, the memorandum of councilmembers Uranus, Asparza, and Carrasco. I support that memorandum. I would just ask, maybe if the maker of the motion could consider on item two D, the last item, which de-emphasizes strict cost-recovery policies for childcare and after-school care, PRN's functions. If the PRN's is going to review its policies and procedures anyway, John, welcome to comment. I'd ask, and I know we've had this conversation before, John, if we're going to be looking at ways to really improve access by reducing costs, then maybe concerning a phase-out of the scholarship. Bureaucracy isn't the right term for it, because I know it's actually, I think it's one person's doing all this work, if I'm not mistaken, but it's a lot of work that providing scholarships is involved with. And I am concerned that scholarships themselves can be a barrier for families who maybe are concerned about providing their personal information to the government for various reasons, or perhaps a sense of, you know, shame, for whatever reason, may not apply for scholarships. And I'm just worried that those services may not be made available, and that could be a barrier precisely because we have this process. Whereas if we were to simply eliminate the cost or reduce the cost significantly in those select communities where we know those costs are real barriers, it may in fact reduce some of your burden that is from your team and hopefully reduce those barriers. So I just ask, is that something that you can incorporate in this review that you would undertake under this item?
Johnson's Rally Director, Park Recreation Neighborhood Services. Yes, Mayor, it's something we would like to incorporate. We've talked a little bit about how do we align those things? And one of our ideas, and we're almost done with the mapping, is to align that with Title I school district areas. And those areas, those services would be free to qualified families, right? And they would have the first shot at the programming, the after-school, those kind of things. And then if there's any space left after that, paying customers could certainly pay. But we feel very strongly, we need to revisit this policy on the recovery. And I know Jim Shannon's probably not excited about me talking about that because it means we're going to subsidize more of it. But this is truly the barrier that we have to get over with these communities.
I appreciate that, John. Thanks for wanting us to consider that. And I appreciate the recommendation, my colleague. On councilmember Davis's memorandum, I very much support the intention of trying to do all we can to bolster TEU, but I understand there's some challenges in actually doing this through the budgetary process at a time when we have a lot of vacancies in TEU. Jim, do you want to talk a little bit about where we're at in terms of vacancies and how we impact? I'm sorry, TEU, I should mention, is for traffic enforcement, that is. And obviously, councilmember Davis wants to respond to many very serious tragedies and the surge that we've seen and traffic fatalities. So you can talk a little bit about the impact of budgetary allocation in this moment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director. Yes, so certainly, you know, the TEU is, you know, one of the important priorities of the city and I know of the police department. I think the current budgeted staffing there is about thirty sworn positions. We have about twelve that are currently vacant. And so, you know, we, you know, as there's vacancies in several units throughout the department. So as we, you know, hopefully can continue to add some resources through this budget process and potentially future budget processes, we would be able to increase the amount, one, of the filled positions that we can get in there, and then hopefully have more of a higher matriculation of the filled positions into that unit. I know that there's direction in your March message that centers around looking at, you know, as we have right now, we've got sort of a surplus over the five-year period. If we can, you know, come forward with what a staffing plan to incrementally add sworn staffing as part of that sort of a longer-term plan and how the TEU gets prioritized in that. I think that's right up our alley, and we would definitely want to have that analysis be explicitly a part of the recommendation that we would bring forward. I know that, you know, for those positions that are, you know, currently contemplated, there's like the foot patrol positions and the M cat positions, I know, are worth data there. Those are, you know, currently overtime-funded or grant-funded positions that would directly be able to continue, whereas the TEU is a little different because they're sort of vacant there, and so it'd be a little harder to fill that in. But I don't know if I misstated anything, if the chief wants to clarify.
Did you want to offer any thoughts about? I know you've got vacancies in lots of units, about how you prioritize sort of adding as we're able to, for example, implement higher head and other things.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Anthony Mata, please, Chief here. Yes, as Jim mentioned, we have one hundred unfilled vacancies that are budgeted throughout the department. The way we prioritize those is officers are released from not only the academy, but also the field training office unit. They are then deployed into the patrol structure, and then we get those bodies, depending on how many we have, given that it's all, you know, they all make it through. Then we prioritize those in a phased approach. We put some in Bureau Investigations or TEU, or in this case, it would be foot patrols and other vacancies that we have throughout the department. Just to give you an example, we have thirty-six recruits that will be graduating in May. They will go into the FTO program. And then once, it's four months, so once they're done with the FTO program, they'll be street-ready in September. Then we have another academy with thirty-four that will graduate in September. And again, they'll go through the FTO program, and they'll be released in January of next year. We strive to have about fifty in the academy. Unfortunately, these are the numbers that we have through the academies right now. But if everyone makes it through, those recruits in the academy are for the higher head to replace vacancies, people leaving, retirement. But it's to plug in the unfilled vacancies that we already have in the department.
So allocating more resources, more FTEs to a unit like TEU, where you already have twelve vacancies, at this point, it's not going to actually help that unit in any way, right? You've got to fill those vacancies first.
Yes, right now, we have, I want to say, between twelve and thirteen vacancies, as Jim mentioned.
Okay. And I appreciate hiring is super challenging for departments nationwide. I think we're actually doing quite a bit better than most departments are. As I think I've heard in prior conversations with you and actually with your predecessors as well, patrol is generally the top priority as getting officers to the communities. Is that fair to say?
Yes, it is, and we also, we have the project with the redistricting that will help us as well to determine how many official officers we need to respond to the calls for services, to provide better service. So that is the main priority right now. It's patrol and then some of the vacancies in the investigations unit.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thanks, John. Then councilmember Mahan is submitting memorandum focused on improving accountability with objective measures for outcomes. I think this might be better suited for discussion we're going to have coming up on our roadmap exercise in May. And so I would, happy to have that conversation. I just suspect it might be better had when we're talking about these priorities in that context and what exactly they mean. So I just suggest that as a for consideration. Councilmember Peralos's memorandum, many recommendations. They're very good. The fourth recommendation, I think, raises a similar challenge in that I think adding this funding back does not actually result in service delivery improvement. That's with regard to the $660,000 in overtime for fire staffing. And perhaps, Jim, could you explain a little bit about the context of the reduction overtime spending last year?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, that proposal was approved by the city council as part of the 2122 adopted budget. And what the fire department had did there is take a critical look at how primarily they do a lot of training, how they do the scheduling regarding the training. So such as we're a little using sort of a really close look at how they schedule their staffing to have some of the mandatory training to not be done on overtime. So we saw a pretty significant reduction of the budget overtime for those purposes, as well as identified a few overtime savings in the chief's office and I think another area. So the actions that we recommended council and council approve did not take away any emergency response readiness or any minimum staffing requirements as part of that action. So adding this back wouldn't necessarily change any of that. I don't know if the chief is online to give any more context to that.
Chief, are you able to hear us? Yeah, we can.
With Jim's summary on that reduction, it was proposed as a cost-reduction strategy, and it was based upon experience where we were not utilizing our entire allotment for training over a couple of years. And so it did not result in any reduction in ongoing mandated trainings, and it did not have an adverse impact on our annual performance.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Another, let's see, I'm not sure if I got to all the memoranda. I know councilmember Foley had raised, because she's in our Brown Act, concerns about CERT and emergency preparedness. And I think, Jim, you had already been contemplating putting ongoing funding to that. Is that right?
So I know, yeah, for the CERT program, we had had, in the 2122 budget, we made the previously one-time-funded CERT position permanent. And then we still had the, in the current year, the training, sort of the non-personal equipment dollars, that was still on a one-time basis. So I think your direction here about trying to get as much of the stuff that was funded on a one-time basis in 2122 on an ongoing basis is right in line with that strategy. So trying to get that CERT programming, I think that would be a high priority for all of the city to get that training done in the budget on an ongoing basis, which it currently is not.
Okay, thanks, John. Okay, thanks, Jim. And then Councilmember Cohen's memorandum, which, which I support. I'll allow him to delve into that. I understand that there's some thinking already happening in the Budget Office on this issue. It's certainly a good idea to bring options back for the council to consider on library operations and bring those back to pre-pandemic levels. I, I heard since I issued the memorandum, there was some concern, I think from PR and AS about wanting some more flexibility to address the illegal dumping on trails. And I made specific mention of installation bollards. So it certainly would support something more flexible that I think that apartment would like to see around boulders, fencing, gates, bollards, or any other device they think is helpful to deter illegal dumping and unauthorized access. So it certainly would support that change. And then finally, I want to thank Mackenzie Mossing, who took on the role of Budget Director impromptu in a way. That was, she's doing a million other things, particularly a lot of work on affordable housing and parks and a lot of other things. So I appreciate her willingness to take this on, given all the transition going on in all of our teams. And she had great support from Trevor and many other members of our team. I appreciate that. And I, I just want to emphasize that, you know, there's a lot of really important things to do in this city. And the problem is, we don't have nearly enough resources to do them all. We continue to have the most thinly-staffed city hall of any big city in the country. We're blessed to have a very dedicated team. More than 6,000 employees who are every day coming to work here to serve the community. And, and we love to have a lot more, but we don't have the resources for that. And so more than anything, we need focus. And I appreciate the input of many. What I've continued to hear from our community and from my colleagues is the importance of our focusing and prioritizing homelessness. That is the number one concern, I think, in our city for all the obvious reasons. And certainly additional focus on public safety and on blight, because we all feel and see those impacts. The, the fourth priority that's listed there around resilience is one that's perhaps less self-evident every day. But we know it's very apparent when the tragedy strikes. And whether it's in the form of drought or sea level rise, wildfires, whatever else it may be. We've got a changing climate. We've got seismic risk. We've got a lot of perils out there. And because we're racing so fast to deal with the latest emergency, we don't always invest the resources. In fact, we rarely invest the resources we need to really prepare for the great challenges we face that we know are coming at us as a city. And so I think having a designated resilience officer with some funding that hopefully helped to leverage grant funding, I think we've been very successful at that in the city with a lot of partners, NRDC or Bloomberg Philanthropies or others. I think we have great opportunities to do really big and good things in the long run. If we're able to at least ensure there's somebody who wakes up every morning knowing that that is their job. They're going to drive our resilience preparedness, our resilience in, in our city. So that's why it's in there. And it's not a lot of money. It's, I suspect a fairly small amount of money, but it's going to make a big difference, I think, in the long run. And then finally, of course, around helping us recover as a community. We know there are neighborhoods, there are families that have been far more severely impacted in this pandemic. A lot of lost jobs, more tragically lost lives and families have really struggled. And so a focus on things like childcare hopefully will enable more folks to get back to work and, and enable us all to pull out of this very challenging time together. So I appreciate my colleagues' consideration of the budget message. I know it's long and as this process is, and we're just at the start. With that, Councilmember Cohen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I first want to start by thanking you for this very thorough budget message and for focusing on the restoration of core services and meeting the most urgent needs of our city. I think the six categories that you've identified are really important for us going forward, so I appreciate that. I also want to thank council colleagues for all their thoughtful recommendations and the commentary that went along with it. I know this is, this is the beginning of a very important and a very key process for the city. And especially in a year like this, as we, we find ourselves with some resources. But, you know, we're working our way out of the pandemic. It's really important to do this in a thoughtful way. And, and we need to make sure that the budget is prioritizing the issues that really are, are the major long-term issues facing our city. As I said, homelessness, public safety, environmental resiliency. I appreciate the, the resilience category there and look forward to the conversations later this spring about how we're going to achieve some of our visionary goals. And hope that we're prepared to really, you know, get those things done and, and put some, and put some effort behind it. I appreciate the questions that you asked. So I think I, most of the questions I was going to ask have been asked, things I was going to ask about. I want to thank Jim, you and your department for, for being part of this. I know that this is the time of year that where you earn your keep doing, trying to put this budget together. So appreciate all of that work. I think I'll just jump straight ahead and make a motion and then see if there's further discussion on that. I want to, the motion I want to make is to adopt the mayor's budget message. My memo on, on library restoration, library hour restoration. The memos, memo from councilmembers Asparza, Carrasco and Arenas. The memo from Councilmember Prowlis, items one through three. And then from the memo, Councilmember Mahan, I want to combine and amend items one and two to, to, to direct the city manager to address the identification and development of objective measures through the city roadmap exercise in May. And then amend Councilmember Davis's memo to direct the city manager's office to return to council with an MBA detailing a strategy for the TEU recruitment and filling of current vacancies when considering our direction for gradual increases in sworn staff. And then add on that the suggestion the mayor just brought forward about creating an MBA to evaluate waiving park permit fees for the Mueckme Aloney. And I think that covers everything. I know you had a question about something about childcare recovery item in, in the memo from the, I'm not sure exactly how to.
Yeah, I'm not sure John needs direction or not. It sounds like he's going to explore a phase out of, of scholarships or at least evaluate that. Is that right, John? Or do you want direction on that?
If I understand the question correctly, we're going to do that analysis.
We don't need that in the direction in the budget, in this memo, in this adoption today.
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah. We've actually found the analysis.
I'll second that. I'll second. Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. Councilmember Mahan?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank you and your team for the focused and I think really responsive budget message that clearly reflects the greatest concerns our community has around homelessness, blight, affordable housing, crime. And some of the, some of the big challenges that we face. I think your message did a great job of articulating those concerns and some of the investments we can make to go in a better direction. Also really appreciate my colleagues' memos. Oh, and thank you to Jim and staff, of course, for the incredible work you all have done behind the scenes to help facilitate the message and prepare us for this budget process. And then wanted to thank my colleagues for their memos. I agree in spirit, certainly if not in exact detail with all the recommendations that people put forward. I thought they were really thoughtful memos. I will say that I, I have some concern about deferring the setting of an objective measure at this point. And what I would propose, if the maker of the motion would consider a friendly amendment, is perhaps delegating that or requesting that the mayor actually come back with a proposal. And the reason I say this is, I think that, Mayor, in your message, you've outlined the six priorities that we ought to be focused on through the budget process. And I think we're going to improve those priorities today. And if we do, I think that having a measure of success that you see as the, the north star for each of those priorities is really what ought to inform the prioritization of roadmapping process that we'll come back with. It's what should help guide the brainstorming we all do with our teams and our constituents about what projects to bring forward. And without having a clear, measurable north star of, we're trying to reduce the crime rate in these parts of town. Or we're trying to reduce the number of people living on the streets overall. Or build this many new apartments. Without knowing what that most important north star is by which you would suggest we measure success over the 12 months of this fiscal year, I think we're actually put at a disadvantage in terms of bringing forward our projects. And one of the things I reflected on from last year's roadmapping process was, we were kind of all over the place. We had a grab bag of a lot of different ideas. And I'd love to see us, I think our residents deserve to know that the projects we're bringing forward are aligned with that north star that you're setting out and the priorities that we are all approving presumably today. So I guess first I would ask Mayor if, if you would think it would be appropriate and possible for your team to actually identify an objective north star measure that many of these investments and future roadmap projects might roll up into? And then, and then I guess I'll go to the maker of the motion next, but can I start with?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm happy to do that through the June message. The challenge, of course, is I'm only able to talk to four other colleagues in the Brown Act. So certainly happy to do it. I'd suggest going to me because I just thought that might be a time when everybody could weigh in together. But I, I could certainly try. Yeah, I think it's, obviously it's something worth doing.
Okay, if you were to weigh in on that, what, what would be the mechanism for you to communicate that outside of the message that we're approving today? Obviously, you don't have that today, although reading between the lines, it's pretty clear to me what you're aiming for. But it would be nice for your six to say.
I think it would be an addendum to the June message. Probably make the most sense.
I guess my question is, when we're proposing projects for the roadmapping process and we're all making trade-offs about which of our proposals are going to move forward, what are we aligning them against if we don't have that measure of success before then?
I see what you're saying. Yeah, so we can certainly come up with something sooner than that. I'm happy to propose something. But, you know, I mean, ultimately it needs a public hearing and, and it needs the whole council. I see Lee's raising his finger suggesting he might have an idea about a process that might be better than whatever it is I'm making up with, making up here on the dice.
Well, I don't, I don't know if it's better, Mayor, but wanted to seek clarification with moving recommendations one and two. And, and obviously, number two of, of Councilmember Mahan's memo, that would be something that we would be doing in budget study sessions anyway around our, our normal budget process, bringing forward performance measures. But specifically kind of with the change management and priorities that the mayor set forth, we would be bringing forward targets around those measures. So with deferring both, I read that as the administration takes a shot at reading between the lines or, or what's very explicit in the mayor's budget message, which I, I think it's pretty explicit what some of those objective measures are. And proposing them through the budget study sessions for the council as a whole to react to.
I'm fine with that, although my observation is that in the past, we've had a lot of KPIs assigned to our CSAs. And yet they have not been explicitly what we've aligned our roadmap projects around or been elevated to say, this is the, this is the target we plan to hit in 12 months. And so I'm fine with having the administration come back with those as long as we believe that the direction today is going to include being really explicit about a small subset of them. I, I suggested one for each of the six priorities the mayor put in his message. Where we're going to set a, a growth goal or an improvement measure, a measurable outcome that is where we think we'll be in 12 months based on what we're investing in through the budget. So, because I did not see that clarity last year through the cycle. And I guess I'm curious, does this, would this direction change what we did last year in some way?
Well, I, I think we were already going to try and change what we did last year. As we outlined in the budget meeting we had with council, it was at the end of January of this year, beginning of February. I think that's what we wanted to do. Separate from the, the metrics within the budget is add more objectives and measurement around the roadmap items and the top priorities of the organization and administration for the year. So that was something that we were committed to doing as an administration as we came through, not only in the budget study sessions, but also the roadmap exercises here.
That generally sounds good, but I just want to clarify, I do, I'm not asking for more objectives. I actually think when you look at our budget documents, we have far too many. We have a lot of measures that show a target, a benchmark, a baseline and flatlines across for the last five years. But what I'm actually asking for is that we create focus around measurable goals that reflect the priorities in the budget message that I think we're going to pass today. That give us a smaller number of objectives that we can all propose our roadmap projects around and can help align and focus our work. That, that's what I felt was missing.
Why, why don't I suggest this? I mean, I think these budget hearings are helpful for us to flesh these things out. I'm happy to propose, I can't remember when exactly the first budget hearing is scheduled. Do you know, Jim?
I think it's around May 12-ish, that, that week or so.
Is that, is that late? The, the study sessions?
Yeah, that's around, yes, the, the.
May 12?
Yeah. I'll, I'll get to the exact date in a sec.
Okay, so I'm happy to propose something between now and then and have the administration, I think, do the same. And then let's just have a discussion. And through the study sessions, I think it's probably a good time for us all flesh it out.
That sounds reasonable to me. Can I ask the maker of the motion if you're amenable to that as a friendly amendment?
Um, I'm not necessarily, I don't know that it requires a friendly amendment. I mean, certainly everybody, anybody, the mayor is free to bring forward recommendations for that. I, you know, as I recall, as, as Lee was just talking about, I recall from the January budget discussion, we were talking about a new prioritization process for the roadmap. And, and you know, I'm glad about that because, you know, we need to do continual improvement of our process. And, and I think last year we were dissatisfied a little bit with the process itself. And I, I think that the city manager's office has been thinking along those lines. Is that, that's good interpretation of that, Lee? Okay, yeah. So, you know, I think, I think it's, you know, I trust our staff a lot, you know, to be able to decide how these things in the mayor's budget message can be converted into measurable objectives. And I'd like to see them take a crack at that from this message and bring that to us for discussion at, whether it's a, you know, council hearing or the prioritization process. However, that process is going to be set up for the month of May. I think that that's what makes sense to me. I mean, I, again, the mayor wants to also weigh in with, you know, some suggestions that, you know, whether it's, whether I have put that in the motion or not, I don't think is relevant. But I, I'd prefer to leave the motion as it is and leave it to staff to bring forward the metrics that they want as part of this. And obviously, there's going to be a lot of differences of opinion amongst the council about which, what, what things need to be measured and what, which ones are priorities and which ones aren't. And I expect that'll be a vigorous discussion at the time. But I'd like to see that process play that way. So that, I'll, I'll leave my motion.
That's fine. We'll file, we'll file a memo. I think we end up in the same place.
And, and just for reference, so the study session schedule is May 11th to May 6, 16th. I think in our initial conversations, we would, we're kind of thinking of having the roadmap discussion be on the 16th after we have kind of heard sort of what's all in the budget. And, and that was the tentative plan. We can always amend that, but that was the initial approach.
So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to support the motion with that understanding. I, I will say for the record, I think it was a little bit backwards to identify the investments we want to make and then talk about which metrics to assign. I think a more, I think that's, that's valuable to understand the performance of a given investment. But I think it's preferable to identify and prioritize and discuss measurable goals first and then talk about the projects and investments that would drive toward the goal. So I, I do still feel that we're doing this a little bit out of sequence. But it sounds like we're making incremental progress toward something that's a little more aligned around measurable outcomes, which is good. On my third recommendation, and Councilor Cohen, did you, am I correct that you did not include the third one? Okay, so I'd like to discuss that for a moment. I, I think it is very important that we at least enable staff to examine and come back with options. And I understand it would be complicated, including possibly a future ballot measure for demonstrating to our constituents that we are personally accountable for setting and achieving goals. The most, the most common question I hear from residents across the city is, where does my money go? What is the city doing about homelessness and crime? What goals are you setting? Are we doing better or worse this year? And we do not, we do not have nearly enough transparency in a simple, easy-to-understand way for our residents to understand what our priorities are in quantifiable goals that are easy to understand. We're trying to reduce homelessness by X amount, crime by X amount, increase the affordable housing stock by X number of units. Set goals, align our budget around, program our budget to achieve those goals, measure our progress and then report back to the community on how we did this year. That, to me, is the whole point of this budget, is the impact we're going to have for the community. And I think we, we ought to be exploring, actually creating incentives, both positive and negative for, count us, we as, as elected officials and senior staff in executing that budget related to our performance. We ought to be super transparent with the public. In a time when costs are going up, people are struggling to pay rent and put gas in the car, we ought to say, these are our goals. This is what our budget's organized around achieving, and here's how we did. Very simple. In fact, basically, any company. In fact, basically any company or nonprofit basically functions that way when having to respond to customers, investors, donors, et cetera. So I find that lack of clarity and, and focus and transparency problematic. And so I am still advocating for, I would like to ask the maker of the motion to reconsider including that we at least start to explore how we connect our performance to future raises for elected officials and senior staff.
Well, I'm not going to accept that, but I do want to ask some questions for Lee about the process of, you know, of salary setting and et cetera. First of all, does the council currently, if I understand it, does the council currently have discretion over our salaries? I mean, we, there's a, there's a salary setting commission that has that discretion, right?
I would actually defer that question to Nora, who can speak about the, the most recent charter change.
Yes, there is a whole process in the charter for, for council salaries and.
Yeah, and I think we did a good, the city did a good thing was before I was here, but I think the city did a good thing by removing the discretion from the council for that and, and leaves it up to the salary setting commission to do the evaluation of what they think the right salary levels are for council. So I, I'll move on to the staff part. So right now there's a, there's already a process for evaluating the performance of, of staff and giving salary adjustments accordingly for the senior staff that aren't represented, right?
That is correct.
And, you know, it seems that we, that process should already include meeting objectives and meeting goals that the staff are, are charged with. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, I mean, under unit 99, management performance pay, you are, are held to your performance to achieve whatever it is in that year and that's changed from year to year. You know, just quickly on this, I would just say, I think council member Mahan is correct and that this could be overly complicated. There are a lot of legal issues. We would need to work with the city attorneys on the charter powers. Also just in implementation, when we're talking about some of the larger priorities that affect certain directors more than others and not council appointees and how we implement that equally across the board remains to be, that's something that we would need to think through. So ultimately I would just say if council did want to move forward this, we would ask you to put it on the roadmap so that it actually can be resourced. Because I think we are asking as an administration for prioritization and focus with this budget. And so any additional policy work would need to be prioritized.
Yeah, and the complexity of, of how external factors affect all these things as well. I mean, it's a pretty complicated thing. So anyway, I'm not going to accept the amendment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just wrap up here and then head it back to the mayor. I mean, I, I think first I just want to make the point that I am aware of what's in the charter in terms of salary setting commission. I, I think there are many different ways to approach this, including simply having a published set of, of objectives each year associated with our budget and then a performance report as to our performance against those goals that then is submitted to that commission as one input in their decision-making process. I, I don't think that's a complicated or radical idea at all. I think that commission ought to see each year as we set a budget, what are our top three to five strategic goals reflecting the community's needs, measure, measure them, how did we perform? And send that to the commission for their input. That's certainly something we could do. I don't even think that would take any kind of ballot action. So there's a lot of ways if we wanted to hold ourselves accountable in that way, I think we could, we could start to do that without too much extra overhead, frankly. On the point about the objectives that go into determining pay raises, how big a raises for the most senior members of staff, I guess my question for you Lee is do, do we publish those measures publicly? Are those accessible? Does the council see what's used to evaluate our performance at the senior staff level?
Jennifer, I believe under different classifications, and I, I made a mistake by the way, in that it's not just unit 99, it's all management unions that can achieve performance-based pay. But I believe we do outline publicly the process in which those allocations and objectives are made.
Well, I think the, the main, the main place where somebody would see that is in our budget book and there, because there's performance measures under each department that, that the senior staff are held accountable for. Obviously personnel reviews and things like that are confidential situation and, but it's, to me, it goes beyond and obviously this will be my, you know, this next round will be my first time with doing this as the city manager. I obviously was very involved as the assistant city manager and was finishing up last year with the, obviously Dave Sykes as the city manager. But to me, it's more than just the performance measures that are in the budget that we evaluate our senior staff on. There's many elements and they all know what those are that are universal to every senior staff member. Like implementation, for example, of recommendations in the city in there, any audits that they may have in their department, for example. How are they, how are they doing with, for this next year? The one team leadership values and expectations and how do they express that? So there's some soft skills and there's some hard skills and, and many things in between that we are measuring to determine what the management pay for performance program looks like for our senior staff. And I think that something similar goes on with the department heads that are majoring their management. Because again, as Lee said, it affects all managers. There's a management pay for performance, performance program and it is a smaller, very small allocation of money. There's not a lot of discretion and, but we do put out guidelines of, of what the pay should look like for somebody that's outstanding to a needs improvement. That's not only pay, but it's also additional executive leap day. So there's, and we do put that out every June when we're going through.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate that there are many inputs to compensation increases and would never argue that performance should be the only one. Certainly there's going to be a lot of different considerations there. I'm glad to hear that performance is an input into pay increases. Hopefully those who set ambitious goals and hit them get bigger raises, right? I am disappointed that we're not considering extending that same notion of accountability to the council at this time, but I'm going to continue to advocate for that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Foley.
Thank you. First I want to acknowledge you mayor, is this your last mayor's March budget message? And, and I also want to acknowledge that this is the Ides of March, but you are no Julius Caesar.
Thank you, yeah, hopefully I'll have a better day than Julius did.
You'll survive beyond this. I also want to acknowledge the members of the public and Jim, Shannon and your team for all of the work that goes into this. And I acknowledge that this is just the beginning. Mayor, I really appreciate your six priorities. I think if we ask our community, these are their priorities as well. And this enables us to really analyze and attack the issues that are really of critical importance to improving the quality of life for all of our residents, for making our city safer, for reducing blight and addressing climate change and other issues. So I want to, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate all of the memos, particularly I want to call out the memo from council member Arenas as far as and Carrasco with regards to the foot patrol in the divisions that is needed. I think that's critical that we have officers who are out there publicly making impact in their communities. I think that's really critical on their to be regarding the, our own staffing. That has been a concern of mine for a long time, so I was really glad to see it in there and glad that, to support it. I think it's really critical that we prioritize our staffing and how we're going to retain our staff and how we're going to make sure we retain and recruit good people because we tend, we keep losing folks. I'm also very happy to support council member Cohen's memo regarding libraries and restoring funding to our libraries pre-recession. Boy, that was so long ago, right? But restoring that and the other memos as well. I do have a couple of questions for you, Jim, mostly regarding to, in regards to CERT. You mentioned CERT is one of those volunteer programs that we've put on hold for a couple of years during the pandemic, but it's so critical because we never know when a disaster will strike. We know an earthquake will occur, we just don't know when it's going to happen. So getting those folks trained is really critical. You mentioned ongoing basis, does that mean when the budget comes forward, there'll be some ongoing funding for CERT?
That is our intention based on, you know, the conversation and the direction we have in the March message as it's proposed to kind of prioritize those 21, 22 one-time items. So in short, yes, that's one of our priorities, try to get that fund on an ongoing basis. We got the position funded ongoing last year. Now our, our job is to try to get the, the other training components on an ongoing basis too.
So is, so that's the training that will be the ongoing basis?
Correct, I think, yes, yes, that's the, yeah.
Okay, the training and the equipment, that sort of thing?
Right, yeah, those, those are not yet on, on an ongoing basis. So the, the staff position is that have previously been a one-time funded position for a number of years or grant funded, able to get that fund on an ongoing base in the general fund last year is one of our very small number of ads. I think we would try to keep chipping away at that and try to get more of that on an ongoing basis in the 22, 23 budget.
Okay, so do you have, feel that you have that direction now? Or do you need something from us in this motion to include, include expanding the funding for, investigating the expansion of funding for CERT?
I don't, I don't think we need any, any, any direction to go beyond what a sort of our previously planned service level was. I mean, I think some of the, some of the, to be, to be frank, some of the letters were as an expansion above and beyond what was currently budgeted. So we would need direction for, for, for that. But I think the priority is to make sure we get this at least funded on an, on, ongoing basis. I don't think we need direction for that.
Okay, very good. That's, that's one thing I wanted to know. Thank you. The other components, mayor, about your budget, I, I really agree with almost all of it. I just, well, probably all of it actually. I just want to expand on the arts funding. Arts, the arts community is still struggling and continuing to struggle. While they are able to go back in person, live performances, it takes, they've had to shut down for Omicron and then reopen and move places around and facilities. Council member Cohen and I just saw production of Les Mis that Starting Arts was putting on and it had to be moved for a month. It was at Hammer Theater, it was beautiful. So if you haven't gone, you should go, well, tonight's the last day, I think tomorrow's the last day. At any rate, I raised, I only raised that because it was a wonderful experience, but the importance of funding our arts programs or assisting funding arts programs, I realize that's not our core service, that it's not a core business that the city of San Jose offers and is funding, but it should be prioritizing some funding for arts because arts is a critical mover in the city. It attracts people to our city, the arts programs, and the more we attract people to our city, the more we benefit from that. So anything we can do to increase funding for the arts program, I know they will appreciate and our artists will greatly appreciate. So I just wanted to mention that. The other thing is I was really glad to see REIL in your, R E L I. Did I get it wrong or right? I always get the acronyms wrong, I'm sorry. Back in your budget, that's such a critical program that we can use, utilize in our neighborhoods very effectively. So to, to our teams, our council offices already spend so much time and code enforcement, working with the neighbors and the communities that to have this neutral party who can help write a letter, help facilitate, help mediate is just invaluable and will free up our staff so that we can be more productive in the community too. So I was really happy to see that. Additionally, your encampment management.
Oh, no.
Vice mayor, you got to mute.
Good pleasure, everybody mute, thank you. Okay.
That's very good, that's funny. And really glad to see the encampment management. I, we need to see that moving forward and I know we will. I know there's a strategy for that and it's going to be complicated on how it's implemented, but it, we need to make that a priority. I think those are all my questions because I think everything else has been covered. Public safety, of course, I'd love to see more in the traffic enforcement unit, but I certainly understand that there's vacancies already in positions you have available to fund. So anything we can do to hire more police officers and get, and make our streets safe is what our community is looking for, that's what they want and that's what we want. And with the rest, I, I'm happy to support, well, obviously I support it because I made the second. I, I think this is really a great budget message for your final one. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Thank you for your supportive words. Council members, Carson?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to quickly just say a couple of things. I wanted to thank your staff, thank city staff and my colleagues for submitting all their great ideas. Very enthusiastically going to support them. And I know that we've all been pushing for library hours and things like that. And so hoping that we can also add additional officers. So I just had a few quick questions. So on abandoned vehicles, for example, this is an issue citywide. And I wanted to thank the mayor for bringing this up because I know he's heard from businesses and residents throughout the city for sure, as we all have. And so I wanted to, to get your thoughts on including neighborhoods throughout the city on that effort on abandoned vehicles because I think that that's really an important part and it's impacting the quality of life for residents in our city.
Yeah, my understanding and Jim or anybody else, feel free to jump in who's more knowledgeable about this. My understanding is we are now, as of a few months ago, we have been implementing a proactive enforcement that is citywide to all of our neighborhoods. And certainly as we're able to supplement staffing, happy to see that increase. I think there is merely a bias or a preference for some of the neighborhood business districts where we know small businesses are particularly impacted because the parking is taken up. But I don't think in any way includes us adding service in the neighborhoods as well.
Okay, so do we need to amend it or is that included?
No, I think it's broad enough to not just focus on those areas, but, but look at, and I think we've been kind of chatting with, since the message came out, kind of chatting with DOT about what options might be available. I think we'll, we'll bring forward some good options for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. And then just a comment and a request really on the donor wall. I thought that was a great idea, a great suggestion. I know that the Office of Cultural Affairs has backlog issues and there are currently funded projects that aren't getting done because of these backlog issues. Certainly I believe in District Seven and District 10, they're not happening because of that. So I just wanted to make sure that they are adequately resourced to do that work as well as the donor wall. And so it was really just a comment on that. And then I wanted to double check on your comments about the bollards, mayor. Does this motion include the expansion of physical barriers? So it includes the, the expanded definition of that? I'm looking at you and David.
I mean, I'm happy to amend if it needs to be for that, so.
Did we?
I don't know.
Do we need to do that here? Do we need to expand the definition of bollards and other physical barriers? Do we need to add that language to this?
I guess for clarity, we, it's no problem to do so, so I'll, I'll accept the broadened language on that. And I think.
Okay, so then if you make that amendment, if you're okay so that we can. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. And then I also wanted to follow up on a request. I'm, like I said, I'm enthusiastically supporting the motion on our priority for 1,000 modular units. So I just request that as this comes back to us, consistent with prior council direction, that staff return with an update on the six sites in council districts currently without modular units or other EIH or bridge housing. That's it. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, council member. I think I can report, I know Jim is leading that effort to more ball and the priority sites he's, he's looking at most closely are, are those districts that have not yet had those projects.
Thank you.
Okay, council member Arenas?
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm also, uh, very, uh, happy with, with your message. I really appreciate it. It falls very much in alignment with what we've been discussing this last two years, um, during the pandemic and now in this recovery. Um, and so I think it'll make a, a huge difference for our community. Um, I also want to thank my colleagues for their support, um, on this memo, um, that we outlined um, amongst three of us, um, and those, and those that actually submitted memos, um, because I think we're all very much interested in, in making sure that we move our community forward. Um, and, and we have to be strategic about that movement. Um, so far, I think that there has been, um, an opportunity for, for us to be strategic, and that is through our priority setting and our roadmap. Um, although I feel like those two things are out of line. Um, and so we're not going to do our roadmap until much later. And we're going to, um, figure out what some of those priorities are going to be. So I'm wondering, how are we aligning? What is that? What, what is that alignment, uh, between the budget and the roadmap priority process?
Thank you, Councilmember Asparza. So the.
It's not in us, but, but.
All right, I'm looking directly at Councilmember Asparza right now. Uh, Councilmember Arenas. Um, you know, as, as we had talked about when we last met on the budget, um, we are going to look to rightsize the roadmap based off of what's in the March message and the resources that we can put towards those things. So I think on the performance metrics, um, obviously, we're going to go through an iteration with the mayor and council in May on more high level objectives, um, as we had outlined in that process and as Councilmember Mahan has mentioned. Um, but I would look for that, uh, to be more focused. Um, based off of the direction we're getting in the March message now around some of those top priorities. So you'll see some enterprise, um, priorities, um, that have more work on them and others, um, where there's less work and we're more focused on, um, I would say more ongoing regular services in some of those buckets.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, well, I'll, um, I will trust in the process, um, as, uh, you've laid it out and as we've been moving through it. I know every year, uh, there's always a bit of a tweak so that, so that we move towards improvement, um, and accountability. And, and I've got to say that, um, I think, you know, our, our folks out there, our residents have, uh, recognized the level of work that our city department staff, especially those who didn't have the, the, um, the advantage of working from home, that they went out during the pandemic and worked and kept, you know, some of the utility, all, all of the, uh, basics, uh, for, uh, working, right? Nobody really knows all those behind the scenes. And so, um, I, I think our, our folks, um, understand that and they appreciate not, um, public employees in a way that maybe they hadn't appreciated before, um, because they relied so much on us, not only for some of those basics, but beyond those basics, uh, the food distribution, the childcare, the opportunities to, to our children to, um, be in a, in a safe place and, and have a learning pod. All of those things have contributed, I think, to, um, a sense of confidence from our residents and, and we, we continue. Uh, and of course, uh, all of the needs are never going to be met. Um, but the, our accountability isn't measured by a poll or by a study, uh, yeah, or a survey. Um, and they can't be driven by complaint based system because that's what we're trying to move out of. We're trying to move out of a complaint based system. Um, because we know that that doesn't hold to our, uh, principle of equity. And so I think we have to be very careful about, um, the cut, the, the six priorities that we're going to move forward. What, while I think that they are important, I, I'm not going to say that one of those or the, the one under public safety, um, any one of the ones under public safety are more important, um, like trash is equally as important as sexual assault or intimate partner violence. And, and the good work that those investigative units, uh, do. Um, if you would ask any of those survivors, they would say, you know, there's a track record of rapes in our city higher than national average. And for me, that's a metric that we should use in order to amplify those units. And so who's to say that that is that one area that we should be focused on? Um, I'm really, uh, nervous about us going down this road, um, of, 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 um, narrowing, um, some of the, these areas. Um, for the sake of, of maybe accountability, I think our, our, our upper administration already has, um, an accountability system. And they use it every year to evaluate, uh, people's performance. Um, and so I don't think that we need to reinvent the wheel. We also are very different from businesses. And, um, we use different, uh, obviously different metrics. And so I'd say to those who want to learn more about public administration, um, there is, uh, the good to great for public sector. And it evaluates some of the best strategies, um, from the business sector to the public sector. There's, there's, there's already some very established frameworks that I think that we can adopt rather than, um, uh, you know, come up with something on our own. It's something that it's already tried and true that comes from public administration. And that works for our city, um, and for both sides, because this has to be, um, then, uh, taken over by administration and then taken over by middle management and taken over by frontline staff. And those folks need to buy into that. And when you don't have folks who buy into a system, um, you don't have a system that's going to change. So, um, I want us to be very careful, um, about that. We, we all, um, submitted memorandum, um, city managers addendums, because that's part of the process that's established. We're asking the city manager to come back and tell us about these things. And so I think there's, there's no harm or foul in, in asking for, um, for an addendum so that we can come back and make a decision, a better informed decision. Um, and I encourage everybody to, to do that. Um, I'm just very nervous that we're going to, um, take up, uh, an, an accountability metric system, uh, based on one person and not a framework that has been uh, proved or, you know, that just hasn't been proven in public administration. So, um, I'm gonna move on. Um. I'm gonna ask about the, how, how is the, um, the resilience corps transitioning? I'm really glad to see that there is, there was a bit of a transitioning, uh, to civil service positions. Uh, Mayor, I, I, I really appreciate this, um, in your memo. And so I wanted to ask and maybe suggest that as we review the strategies to enable, and if, you know, my colleagues, we all approve this and this moves forward in, um, my memo, um, from two C, two A, excuse me, um. No, to be, uh, from to be, i- it is the strategies to enable HR with vacancies. And so I wonder if we could also incorporate the resilience course or have that, um, program as a source of, of future workforce, which, you know, I, Mayor, I, I believe that that's, you know, your intention there. I just want to make sure that in that, um, uh, the city manager's addendum, uh, we can somehow integrate that. Because if we don't, if we don't integrate, if we don't intentionally put these in, um, into our systems, there, there, it's going to take longer to integrate. So, um, the other one is. So, so the, uh, neighborhood services and education, um, city, which I've been cheering for the last couple of years. We are, we are going through a process where, um, each of the programs is taking a look at how they align with what, what their alignment is and how they respond to the needs of our youth, uh, children and youth. And there's a master plan that's, um, getting developed that's on, uh, in queue to get developed. And so, um, I would ask that any responses that have to do with the children and youth, um, also go through, uh, Angel's, um, youth master plan, um, which is being worked out on, at the moment. So that we could be intentional, so we can be strategic and we can have a system of care that's, um, seamless. Um, as well as that is working in a very complimentary way with, with the county. Um, the last, is it the last thing? Oh, the last thing I was going to ask about was the interim funding for the Autumn Parkway Reserve impact. And this is, this is a source of funding for the diversity of fellowships and service. Um, and so I wanted to know, um, but what, what is going to get impacted with that reserve funding? Is there going to be an, any impact?
Member, this is Jim, the budget director. I, I think the Autumn Parkway Reserve is for, of, of future capital project that, that is, I think, of, of more than a year off, I think. So I don't think there will be any service impacts by temporarily accessing those funds.
That's correct. The autumn, autumn extension isn't complete in its master plan.
Perfect, perfect. And, um, I don't know if, what, if you know the diversity of fellow, uh, of the fellowship and, um, Jennifer on this program. Uh, what I'd like to see is, is opportunities for a local, our local, um, community to serve so that they could potentially stay with the city of San Jose. Um, just like Dolan did and, and I think, uh, a, a couple of folks in the mayor's office, which I think is, is wonderful, but I don't see that it happens very often and, um, and often these are just wonderful, excellent, very smart, uh, fellows participate in this program. Uh, and they make a world of, of difference. Um, and then we miss them, right? Because they're go off and going on to their next, um, their next mission here. And so I'd love to see us integrate a more local, um, fellowship program. Is that something that's possible?
Um, thank you for the question, Councilmember Arenas. Um, I think for the, for the fellows program, um, I've asked our HR department to, to look at a, a broader fellows program beyond what's here in the, in the mayor's message, because we do need to have different pathways to come into city employment and we need the different pipelines. So we can certainly look at that. There is an established, uh, fellowship fellow program called the Urban Fellows. It used to be called the, um, Urban Rural Fellows Program that I actually led back in the day when I was an assistant to the city manager, which is, is focused on, generally, I think there's a, a lot of people of color that are part of that program. Just, we have actually hired amazing people from that program that just, uh, would knock your socks off of how, uh, that, that whole program, what, what kind of people, uh, are part of it. So I would like to look at a, so I've asked HR to look at fellows programs that would be beyond this one. I think this program, uh, and again, I think the mayor, we call that Dolan Bechel as one person, but we've had many good fellows from, um, uh, from the program that the mayor is speaking about in his message. But I would like to go a little bit beyond that. So we will take a look at local, national and other fellow programs. But we, we have, we also have one in our own, um, uh, it's called a next gen committee that's part of the Santa Clara County, um, City Managers Association that have also looking at a more regional fellows program. So I think we, we can, uh, look at many things here, uh, for fellows.
Wonderful. I was hoping that you, uh, it was called knock your socks off fellowship program.
They were.
But, but that one will do. Um, okay, so th- thank you, Jennifer. I really am excited about that. I'd love to see diversity. I want to make sure that we also create that pipeline and opportunity for folks that reflect, uh, the different colors of, of our city. Um, the very last thing, and, and thank you, Mayor, for the support on the childcare pieces and, um, and your overall support for, for the memo. Very much appreciated. It, it is one area that we've been working on, um, in moving in the direction of, of having place-based recreation and ca- and camps, uh, during the summer. So that we wouldn't have to have this scholarship. And so I, I'm glad you and John talked about that this is exactly the direction we've been moving. I was hoping that this is going to be a product of this memorandum. And so I appreciate that, that support. Um, and within that, there's a, it, within the, the, some of the work that's being done under childcare is the family friendly, family friend neighbor, um, program that helps childcare providers, um, or providers of care that want to pursue a childcare license, um, to get ready for that. And so there, there is a similar program out there with the Cisupla collective program. I think you heard from a couple of the ladies who, um, were speaking in Spanish. Um, and it's, I think it was called Trabaja, Trabajos a Crecer. And so, um, in loose translation, it's, uh, jobs that we can grow in. And, um, and I think there, there's a lot of opportunity to bring those two programs together, um, in a way that, um, will just grow this childcare system. Um, I, I think that it'll, it'll be a real opportunity. And so I'm hoping that we can include that in, um, in the city manager's, uh, report or addendum, excuse me. All right, um. That is it for me. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arenas. Councilmember Cross?
Yeah, thank you, uh, very much, Mayor. Um, and appreciate the, uh, the memorandum from you and, and my colleagues as well in the discussion today. Um, I, I would echo, um, that I, I, um, am very much in support of the direction that you've laid out. And I think it's an admirable, uh, final budget, uh, memo from, uh, from yourself. Um, and I think that it's augmented well by our colleagues here and appreciate, appreciate the, the inclusion of, uh, my memo and, uh, the, the staff response on my recommendation for, I, I understand, uh, that now and, and why that, um, should not be included and, and I'm in agreement with that. I did have a question, Mayor, on, uh, your memo in regards to the, uh, T O T, um, backfilling. And, um, and wanted to just, uh, understand there what your idea was. You have uh, in your memo, um, under the San Jose, I brought on cultural funding portfolio, item seven B. Uh, you mentioned Butris, the city's cultural funding portfolio with a one-time allocation, allocation to support arts grants through another low revenue year in the T O T accounts. Um, and I, I, I agree with that. I appreciate it. Unfortunately, as we've seen, T O T has been really, uh, the, the, the last, uh, tax revenue to, to have, uh, any bit of a rebound. And unfortunately, I, I don't think we'll see one again this coming year. I think it's going to take some time for that. Um, exciting to see finally, uh, uh, the new hotel, uh, old hotel, but, uh, reopening in, in downtown. Um, and, uh, I think that'll be important. But what was your idea in regards to that funding? Is it similar to what we had last year where we are attempting to, to backfill, um, you know, the, 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 the grants that we would give through, uh, would have been traditionally T O T funds?
Uh, largely, yes, Councilmember. I know that there's a movement afoot to try to create a more steady, consistent stream of, for arts funding. Uh, I appreciate the intention of those who are advocating for that, but, uh, I don't pretend that I have the secret answer. Uh, so I suspect that's going to take a, a deeper dive from all of us. So in the meantime, it seems to me is really just a one time bridge to get us to what we hope will be a happier future. Uh, assuming we're in the ninth inning of this pandemic, obviously that's a big assumption, given what's happening in Europe. But I think if we are in the eighth or ninth inning here, uh, then what I hope that means is, uh, we're going to see a pretty quick rebound in our hotels, uh, pretty soon.
Yeah, I hope so too. Um, I, but I, I, I definitely wanted to at least give that assurance to our arts and cultural, uh, organizations that are out there that, that traditionally would, would depend on those T O T funds and grants, uh, from Office of Cultural Affairs. And, um, just wasn't clear on what your intent was there. So I think we have, um, some wiggle room. And I look forward to the, the city manager's office coming back and the budget, uh, director coming back with recommendations that will, uh, as you described Butris that, but, but backfill in my mind. Um, the, the funding that unfortunately is, is lost at the moment and do hope for that recovery quickly. Um, want to say thank you to Councilmembers Arenas, Asparza and Carrasco as well. Um, I wholeheartedly support the requests, uh, in their, uh, their. I wholeheartedly support the requests in their memo there. And I think we heard it in our Public Safety Committee, the report back from the Police Department on how successful the Foot Patrol operations have been and how they are so beneficial, not just in combating crime, but in building rapport with the community. That community policing aspect that you get from Foot Patrol is so very vital, and we've been lacking that. And this is a very easy way to get both safety and build that rapport with the community. And I think that, you know, it certainly is a benefit and has been a benefit as an overtime-funded role in the downtown core. I would agree, it's a long time overdue, where it should be rolled into a base budget. But I also think we've seen that benefit in key areas and neighborhoods across the city. So I appreciate that inclusion and look forward to that opportunity, as well as the wage theft request. We know where that's at, backlog really up there is a high priority, but unfortunately been prioritized a number of times. And we've had almost near consensus on the agreement of it, but we haven't really seen progress. And I understand why we have frustration from our community members, and that includes me. And so I look forward to us being able to fill the gap there and see if we can't get that off of the backlog list. We'll have an opportunity in the priority setting process as well, I think, to advocate again. But I think making sure that we have the funding there for it is important as well. So I do appreciate that. Lastly, this is in relation to the funding that we, or the mayor that you proposed for the School of Arts and Culture, which I do support and appreciate. I know that we recently had Sacred Heart Community Services present just last week, I believe, at HCDC, and in a request for a reallocation of some funding to be able to have some infrastructure and acquisition rehab dollars go to efforts that they're doing. This is a CDPG dollars, and to be able to help similarly with a new facility that they are acquiring. And I know that they have a pretty large gap there as well, and so $2 million wouldn't cover that whole gap. I am interested in seeing if we could, I know there's potentially some opportunities here, whether it's with CDPG money or other money. And so I would like to ask if the maker of the motion would be willing to include that inquiry and ask our city manager to create an MBA on that as well and mimic what the mayor wrote up for the School of Arts and Culture, if the maker of the motion would be comfortable with that.
I think the maker of the motion is just temporarily abandoned, so why don't you hold that thought, and we'll come back to it.
And happy to get your thoughts while the maker of the motion is in the bag. I don't know, Mayor, obviously augmenting to hear the request, so.
Yeah, I'm open to an MBA. I'd give staff an opportunity to sit down with the group and really understand the project. In the case of what I propose, this was a process that took a few months for us to really understand what they're doing. But certainly, an MBA is worth an effort. Councilmember Cohen, I'll allow Councilmember Pross to use the question.
Yeah, apologize, Councilmember Cohen. Did you catch any of what I said, or would you like?
I was just coming back from the restroom, sorry.
No worries, sorry. So similar to the request that the mayor made for the School of Arts and Culture, Sacred Heart Community Services is also acquiring a new facility, growth in their facility. And they went, Ponteiro Gavada went to our HCDC Commission last week in making a request to try and reallocate some CDPG dollars. And my understanding is that, you know, that could work, but it may not be the best approach that we may want to look at an MBA, manager's budget addendum, to identify, would it be CDPG dollars that could be reallocated, or could there be some other funding that could be allocated to help them as well to match and offset some of the costs? I think it's upwards of $20 million. And so their request was a $2 million move of some CDPG dollars. So I wanted to see if the request could be included in your motion for the city manager to include an MBA on that request.
I mean, yeah, if it's just an MBA, then to understand it, then that's fine.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for this budget message. As Councilmember Foley pointed out repeatedly, it's your last one. And it's our last one, I should add. And I'm grateful for the direction of this message in particular. You know, I couldn't agree with the direction more so than this one. It's been a rough couple of years and didn't think that we'd be ending our last year on this kind of a note, but I'm very grateful for your leadership and wanted to really express my gratitude to you. In particular, really the emphasis on equity. And as someone had mentioned, I think it was Gabriel, he may have been one of the first speakers this afternoon. When we talk about equity, it's very apparent, especially after these last two years, that equity really points towards our underserved communities, in particular, the east side of San Jose, which I've had the honor of serving. I don't want to say much other than, we just want to call out a couple of things that are of particular importance to me. One, of course, is the direction in housing those families and doing everything that we can to support. The families are really on the verge, on the verge of either homelessness or really on the verge of becoming, and also those who are living on the street. So I thank you for that. But the other is, and we're hearing it from our residents, I'm hearing it from my residents, every effort that we can to battle blight in every form possible, whether it's abandoned cars or graffiti or illegal dumping. I appreciate that direction because we all are very aware of the broken window syndrome. So thank you for that direction as well. And I just took my team to visit our Office of Emergency Affairs and came out of there feeling a little frightened by some of the information, of course. I know that we've been dealing with a pandemic, but we also know that there are other emergencies that we need to prepare for. And we know that because we live on the fault lines and we have to prepare for the next big one. And it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And so I appreciate really having every effort that is within our control go into that preparation. So thank you for that as well. The last thing that I just want to really emphasize is the support of the arts, in particular, the support of the School of Arts and Culture. This has been, let me just say, what's happening at the School of Arts and Culture. They've learned to pivot in such a way that has been a real lifeline to our community during COVID, whether it was food distribution or vaccination. The School of Arts and Culture has been a central meeting place for our community. It's been a trusted center. It's been a center where, from its inception, history has been made there for the east side of San Jose. And to be able to continue to support its efforts and its growth and its development and the way that they continue to bring community together, I just really appreciate your recognition and your value of our folks there. And so I want to especially thank Jessica for being here today and Jonathan and the entire collective and all of the work that they've been doing. These are boots on the ground. These are the folks that really understand the needs of our community, and they've been doing the hard work and the very painful work at times. And so I'm very appreciative of all of the work that they've been doing with our folks. And I don't think that the work is over. I think that it's, in a way, it's just beginning. Additionally, I want to also thank you, and I'm very supportive of the Eastside Education Initiative. As I've mentioned before, the statistics are alarming. That 80% of our young men and women who are graduating from Eastside Union High Schools are graduating into minimum, what is it, jobs that are paying minimum wages. 80% of our high school students who are graduating from Eastside Union High Schools are graduating into jobs that are paying minimum wages. And that's alarming, given especially the cost that, what it costs us to live here. So again, thank you for supporting the initiative. I think that it's going to prove to be very successful and that we will be able to provide the kind of support that our students need in order to be able to have access and have success in their future. And in terms of the memo submitted by my council colleagues, Councilmember Renas, Councilmember Esparza, and myself, they've already said what was on my mind, except that I will add one final thought, and that is the value that our facilities have proven to have time and time again. And it's been reported in the numerous presentations by our own staff, our PRNest staff, how these became a lifeline for our residents, especially for those underserved communities. It was gathering places for our residents. It was where individuals exercised when gyms were shut down. It's where people gathered for religious events, for spiritual events. It's where individuals gathered to have a mental health break, where families who were living in overcrowded conditions were able to get some respite, even sometimes from each other, during a very, very difficult, very stressful moment that we were all experiencing. And so, you know, over the last few weeks, we've seen that some of our facilities need a little bit of TLC. And I'm hoping that city manager and her staff will be able to come back to us and give us an idea of what exactly that translates into, what exactly it means to bring some of these facilities up to par in comparison to some of the other facilities in other parts of the city so that we can have a dignified life in the east side of San Jose and in some of the under-resourced communities. And so that all of these facilities can be comparable because it's very apparent that from some of the reports that we've seen and from my visits to some of these facilities, that we're currently not at parity. So I'd like to be able to see what it takes to invest in these facilities so that our residents can continue to enjoy them, but so that we can actually give these facilities that tender loving care so that they are respected as they should be respected in order to continue supporting our residents. So that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you so much. I will be supporting your message, and I really appreciate having worked with you over these past seven years, providing our residents the services that they deserve.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate your collaborative work on this budget. Well, I know we didn't work together on this budget. I take that back, but on prior budgets and for many, many years. And I should say, the budgets have gotten a lot better, and that's good news. So thank you for your work and perseverance through the tough times. Okay, I know we've got a couple more members, a couple more colleagues who'd like to speak. In the second round, I just want to make sure everyone's had a first chance. So I think everyone on the line has raised their hand at this point. I just wanted to offer, you know, all the suggestions we haven't taken, I would say that, you know, Councilmember Mayhahn's concept of performance-based pay increase for council and senior staff, I think is pretty intriguing. And I think it is worth a deeper dive. Not today. I know we're focused on the specifics of the budget today, but I think it is worth a deeper dive. And I think that because, I know, you know, as I channel, this is not out of any kind of derogatory sense at all about the performance of our senior staff or our council or anyone, but rather just a frustration, I think, generally in the community about sort of a structure that's set up by this charter that doesn't really give a sense of accountability to residents. Where those residents are protesters who come to my house telling me they want me to tell the police chief to fire a police officer, or it's residents who come to me saying, I own a small business and I can't get a permit, and I wish you'd fix this system. And I think we've all experienced that. We've all experienced that. And I think just something that establishes a greater sense of accountability is a good thing. So I hope we do take a deeper dive. It's not going to be today, but I don't want to dismiss the opportunity to do that. Councilmember Mayhahn?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate those comments, and I'll be really brief here, but I just wanted to kind of respond and reflect on one of the comments made about government running like a business. I just wanted to clarify some of my thinking there just quickly in case it's misunderstood. So when I talk about goals, metrics, accountability, some of the things we've been talking about here today, I want to be very clear that I do not think government can run like a business, right? And nor am I suggesting that it should. There are countless ways that we're different from a business. We have a responsibility to serve everyone, to provide equal access and support to all of our community members, irrespective of their ability to pay. We talked about that a little bit today. And even when we do a great job, it's not like suddenly our revenue goes up and we can just invest a bunch in R and D and hire a bunch of additional people. There's so many ways we're different from a business. There are ways we're different from nonprofits, unions, all different kinds of organizations. But I think to suggest, is at least one of my colleagues, I think, did, if I heard correctly, that we can't or shouldn't really prioritize or set a small number of objective measures of success or make trade-offs and, yes, say, we're not going to do some things because we have a responsibility to double down and focus on the things that do the greatest good for the greatest number of members of our community, like public safety and infrastructure, or that we can't be more accountable to the public, I really think would be misguided. Because I believe, and I think there's a lot of public policy research focused on the public sector that shows that those are just some of the basic practices of any high-functioning organization. I've been a part of literally grassroots community organizing movements that have used those same tactics of setting goals, measuring, having to make trade-offs, and holding leaders accountable. I don't, I think those can be common to a well-run PTA as well as our local government or any other entity, including businesses. So I just, and I think when we often get stuck on the real challenges we face, like lack of revenue, low staffing, you know, underperforming services, particularly in our underserved communities, ultimately, it boils down, I think we're actually saying a lot of the same things. It boils down to prioritizing, setting an objective measure of success. It's not about who's got the highest salary or the biggest title, but just measuring objectively, like we saw with our parks a couple of weeks ago. Are we delivering or not? I actually think it's an equity-aligned initiative, more than anything, to objectively measure success and hold ourselves accountable for delivering on a smaller number of things that our community needs. So I just want to, you know, really be clear that I am not coming into this naively. I have read the public policy research about cities like Nashville and San Diego who have done these kinds of things, our federal government that's introduced more pay-for-performance and accountability measures, race to the top models. There's a lot of structures out there that are all about objective measures, managing performance, incentivizing performance. And I just, I don't want us to get confused in a, I don't want us to get distracted and actually go backwards and start to think that maybe we can't prioritize, or we can't measure, we can't hold ourselves more accountable. I worry that this debate could go sideways if we aren't careful. So I want to be very clear for the record, I am not in any way arguing that suddenly City Hall is going to be like a business. Just to be clear, I think these are- Just to, just to be clear. I think these are performance, uh, management measures that, that serve many organizations well. So thanks for the opportunity to clarify that.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you. Um, I, I know that there are discussions ongoing, but I wanted to make it a little bit more explicit today. You know, we talk a lot about the basics, um, and back to the basics and, uh, public safety. And I know that there are a number of really difficult decisions that need to be made, particularly in ongoing funding costs versus one-time funding costs. And so, um, I wanted to see if the maker of the motion would, um, would include a friendly amendment to ask, um, if we could have a, to have the city manager, to have an MBA related to fire, uh, fire needs. And I know that there are a few, and so I wanted to kind of leave it at that so that staff could come back with what those costs would actually be. Because I think that there's a lot of discussions going around, but again, we face hard choices every day. And so if the maker of the motion would be open to that.
Councilmember, could I just butt in and, and ask you, you focus primarily on staffing?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, of course, it's, it's reasonable to be asking the question. I guess we were hearing before that staffing was, well, is staffing, I guess it's, yeah, I guess it's fine to do the analysis with an MBA. I mean, I'm a little unsure about what specifically we're, it's asking for. But, um, as long as that's clear to whoever would do that analysis, that's okay with me.
Okay, thanks.
As, as the maker of a second, I just have a question. So just for staffing or equipment?
Uh, staffing. We have, we have ongoing staffing issues that I think it would be helpful if we, we were able to get an MBA that sort of laid out what those costs would be to all of us.
Okay. I, I mean, I'd be willing to include equipment too, because we have a couple of fire stations that are opening up. But what, how, staffing's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask Jennifer, uh, and Lee, uh, and Jim, do you guys have enough clarity on that particular MBA request?
Yeah, I think we do. Uh, there's, you know, there was a, an organizational review a few years ago that laid out what the priorities, uh, might, next priorities for improving fire service would be. And, and they would connect the staffing to some equipment deployment and improving, enhancing services. So we can revisit that and, um, and give you a sense of, of where we would possibly go next with enhancing our pla- fire service.
Yeah, a- and I think this came up, um, for those with question marks, under priority, was it? Um, I'm sorry, not priority. Um, the annual services report, um, when we had some questions around fire. I think that having those costs laid out to us would be a next appropriate step.
It's perfectly fine for us to do that.
Okay, Councilmember Arenas? Is that hand from before? Would you like to?
No, no, no. It's, it's, uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify and thank you, um, Councilmember, uh, Mayhem for addressing that. The, I didn't, I was not confused, but I, um, and I didn't mishear you. I think you misheard me. What I was referring to was a, um, a book by Jim Collins, which is called Good to Great. It's based on a fifteen-year study with, uh, very successful companies. And he took those theories and those strategies and applied them to the public sector. And so I didn't say you were, um, you were applying any business models to government. I was saying that there, there have been business models that can apply to the public sector and be successful. And, um, my reference was really, um, to indicate which frame, to ask what framework. And you don't have to answer today. It's just as we have this conversation, what framework are you using? And it, it has to be very, um, personal to and, uh, tailored to our city. You know, th- there's some things that may work in some cities and, and not, and not here. But, you know, I, I just wanted to, to have the opportunity to, to clarify that. And so, um, thank you.
If I could just respond, I just want to say thank you for clarifying. I, I've actually read the book. Used to have my executive team read it. It's one of my favorites, but thanks for clarifying.
I read the first two chapters and I fell asleep. All right. Okay, uh, any other comments or questions?
I did, I did just raise my hand and I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Collins, forgive me.
You know, I, I had been thinking about this and I didn't really know if I wanted to bring it up today or not. And I know, you know, Councilmember Sparza asked for it on fire, but I've been, we weren't asking questions last year and particularly through the audit about the optimal fire, police department staffing. And I know that we're not going to be able to make big changes because we can only hire so many per year and there's a, there's a long process and, but at some point, I feel like we ought to be doing, I don't know whether it's through an MBA or some other study, an analysis of what are the optimal levels of staffing versus overtime? And how, and what is a roadmap for getting there? And if we keep kind of kicking that can down the road, we're never going to even do the study and figure out how we get to that optimal, optimal level. So I'm, I'm wondering, I guess it's a question, it, how would we do that? And what would we, would the process look like? And when should we discuss that?
Yeah. Um, every year, uh, the Budget Office and the Fire Department, uh, takes an exam, does an examination of minimum staffing requirements because it is different.
You mean police or fire?
In, I'm talking about in fire.
Okay, I was asking about police.
Oh, I thought you were still on fire.
No, I'm sorry. I just, it triggered my, my thought about it because you mentioned fire.
So I think as we, as, you know, I'm not sure if right now is the right time. I'm concerned, um, that our police department overtime, we, we have been still using, um, like vacancy savings to meet their needs. And we need to get the base budget, we need to get their ongoing overtime to be more in line with their expenditures. And when we hit that, which hopefully as they fully get the higher head in, in, in the action here, and if they've got, obviously we are in a higher head mode, but we don't, we haven't seen the, the other end of it where the officers are actually totally on the street yet. But when we get those officers up, we need to really do a deep dive on right sizing their overtime budget, I believe. And so I'm not sure if it's right now, but, um, I don't think there's any overtime that we could convert, for example, to officers because we're not even spending any ways close to the ongoing base, ongoing amount of overtime. So, um, I think it's something we should discuss a little bit down the road. Let's see how we get on our hiring this, this year and, and see if we're actually fully, uh, are actually ahead in our street, you know, more in our street ready or closer to our budgeted positions. And I think that's the time to trigger a discussion about that.
Okay, thank you. I guess it's something to wait, to figure out in the next fiscal year.
I think more probably next year. Would you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Would you agree, Jim?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Other questions? All right, let's vote.
Jimenez? Jimenez, thank you. Peralas?
Yes.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhem?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Motion passes ten, zero.
All right, thank you. And thank you to my colleagues for supporting the, the message and for your changes. Okay, uh, let's move forward. Uh, actually, before we do, let's go back to the report from post-session. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, forgot to, uh, report out that we did receive authority to file a suit today, um, against Cal Engineering and Geology, Inc. for, um, breach of contract alleging that they, uh, failed to indemnify the city for property damage of a family camp. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on now to seven point one, municipal golf courses update. We do have a presentation. John and Avi and team.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Sisrally, Director of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services, with me today. Deputy Director Avi Yotam over the Parks Division and Park Manager Troy Treaty, who is over our Destination of Events and Sports, of which golf is a part. We're here to talk about golf, uh, at long last. Fifteen years ago is an audit that said we need to, we need to figure this out financially, and here we are finally. I think we figured it out. So I think we've got some good news to report to you. And I will turn it over to Troy to, uh, run you through a presentation.
Thank you, John. Hello, Mayor and Council. As John mentioned, my name is Troy Treaty. I'm a Parks Manager with PRNS and I oversee the Parks Division's Events and Sports Unit, which includes the management and oversight of San Jose's three unique golf courses. Our municipal golf courses offer a variety of size and difficulty to their guests. Rancho de Pueblo, located in Council District Five, is a nine-hole par twenty-eight course. Because of its size and location, it is a great course for beginner golfer to find their game, as well as regular players. Los Lagos, located in Council District Seven, is the newest course in our inventory as an eighteen-hole par sixty-eight. Los Lagos offers additional challenges for the intermediate to seasoned golfer to hone their skills in the heart of San Jose. Finally, San Jose Municipal Golf Course, located in Council District Three, is a traditional eighteen-hole par seventy-two municipal course that offers open fairways and flat terrain for a great experience for golfers of all skill levels. All three courses have well-appointed driving ranges and practice facilities for players looking to improve. Golf is a sport that serves players ranging from eight to eighty, making it one of the widest-ranging programs we offer. Young golfers benefit from exercise as well as the life skills developed on the golf course. Since golf is played without referees, kids learn to take responsibilities for their actions and minimize mistakes. Inevitably, a round of golf has, has its ups and downs. This helps kids develop skills like maintaining a positive attitude, concentration, and control over one's emotion. Seasoned golfers benefit from keeping one's body active and increasing brain function and engagement. Beyond ball golf, Coyote Creek Trail runs through Los Lagos and Rancho de Pueblo offers soccer golf to its guests. The community benefits in many ways from non-golf activities at all three of our local courses. Whether attending a paint night, live music night, a wedding, or a spree gang hunt, community members of all ages enjoy the beauty and hospitality of these facilities. Golf courses provide extensive environmental benefit for both flora and fauna. Los Lagos and Rancho are both recognized as Certified Autobahn Cooperative Sanctuary by the Autobahn International. San Jose Muni and Los Lagos both serve in an invaluable purpose with their flood control capacity. Over the years, city golf courses have been subject of extensive study, largely due to performance that did not meet projections or expectations. The last study was the September twenty fifteen audit of the city golf courses that daylighted the challenges with municipal golf during an industry-wide lull in participation. It also addressed the financial burdens the city faced to provide per, public access to the golf courses and their open spaces. Moving forward with the RFP process will help clear the last two recommendations from that audit related to favorable terms and some contractual housekeeping. The audit encouraged us to find new strategies to address these challenges. The city council directed staff to bring back a community engagement strategy proposal to evaluate the current land use of the Los Lagos Golf Course property. At the direction of council, PRNS began a community outreach project. Through various survey mechanisms, engagement tools, and in-person events and meetings, staff conducted an extensive engagement project. Initially, the engagement process was within the community around Los Lagos course. Subsequently, it was expanded to include citywide outreach about the course. From these meetings and surveys, staff received substantial feedback that respondents wanted to preserve golf and its social opportunities. The department presented its final report to City Council on February sixth of twenty eighteen, and the council accepted the community engagement process results and staff recommended guiding principles for ensuring that the future uses of Los Lagos site serve and meet the interests of the community, maintaining open space and recreation, seeking financial sustainability, and creating opportunity and awareness for the courses. At this point, I'll turn it over to Avi. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Mayor and City Council members. Avi Yotam, Deputy Director of Parks. On February sixth, two thousand and eighteen, when staff's guiding principles were adopted, the City Council gave staff further direction. Councilmembers Rochan Jimenez, Nguyen, and Mayor Lucardo issued additional memoranda that upheld the continuing recreational use of the Los Lagos property that sought improvement to management and operations of the city courses and that called for reevaluation of the recreational use after debt was paid off. Staff has worked to implement this direction since then. As Troy mentioned, we have coordinated with course operators to provide additional community events, including summer concert series, national night out events, paint nights, and more. Debt on the Los Lagos and Rancho de Pueblo golf courses was paid down in the fiscal years twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budgets, as directed in the mayor's budget messages for those years and as approved by the City Council. Using one-time funding such as proceeds from the sale of the Hayes Mansion and savings from the refunding of City Hall debt. The debt clearance is critically important. Not only did that clear two million dollars in annual debt service, previously with tax-exempt debt on Los Lagos and Rancho de Pueblo, the city was limited to qualifying management agreements that placed the business risk for losses with the city and had limited incentives for operators. With that cleared, we can now move forward with better management structures, namely lease agreements, that place the risks and incentives in the right place with the operators and that protect the city financially. As directed, staff also evaluated alternative land uses. As shown on the presentation, we evaluated Los Lagos for a sports complex, regional park, and an open space. As part of this evaluation, staff considered the public use benefits as well as potential concerns of the alternative uses. We also determined that converting to the other uses posed significant capital and ongoing operating costs. Those high costs, if funding were available, would compete with important projects in the department's infrastructure backlog that are also underfunded, such as rehabilitating the J.R. Blackmore Police Activities League Stadium Complex, preserving Alamoak Park for future generations, and refreshing overfelled gardens. As we all know, the world has changed a lot since twenty eighteen. Golf was one of the first recreational and leisure activities to reopen in May twenty twenty, after opportunities and menus were closed as the community was ordered to stay at home. These charts show that the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year was historically great for the golf industry and especially our San Jose golf courses. Rounds across the three city courses were up sixty-five percent compared with the last complete year before the pandemic. I want to note that while it may look like the San Jose Municipal Course barely ticked up on the financial chart shown on the screen, the income to the city increasing by a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars means that San Jose Municipal revenues increased by almost one and a half million dollars compared to pre-pandemic figures. Rounds across the three courses this current fiscal year have retained much of their historic highs and we're currently tracking at ninety-four, ninety-five percent of last year's golf play. And the San Jose Municipal Golf Course has actually had its level of play increase this year. This jump isn't just local. In July, Kemper Sports released the results of its golfer insight survey of nearly twenty-five thousand current, lapsed, and new golfers. Some of the notable results included a twenty-seven percent increase in golfers ages eighteen to thirty-four, thirty-three percent of new golfers being female, and fifty-eight percent reporting that they intended to play more than they did in twenty twenty. So basically more and changing demographics for golf and a stickiness to the increase. Nationally, the golf industry is also seeing indications that off-course golf, like Topgolf in Alviso, attract new players and a younger demographic and that those gains trickle back to the golf courses. With the combination of the elimination of the financial burden on the bond payments, potential additional costs posed by other land uses, the ability to enter into a lease agreement, and to continue with lifelong accessible recreational opportunities afforded by golf, our department recommends continuing golf operations at all three locations and moving forward with an RFP for a long-term lease or leases for the courses. Staff is currently in the RFP development process and will release an RFP for a lease for all three golf courses with a probable RFP award being issued in the fall of twenty twenty. The RFP is going to be written to allow for downside protection to the city. It will incentivize the less C or less E's to increase participation through marketing and investment. It will seek expanded community access and alternative programs, and it will build in flexibility for the future. We know the current hot streak in golf may not last, and so we will include early termination rights in the leases for the city to change course if conditions warrant that in the future.
And that concludes our presentation. The, to accept the report and then, um, authorize us to proceed with the request, proposal pop, sorry, request for proposal. To accept the report and then authorize us to proceed with the request proposal pop, sorry, request or proposal process. I do have one clarifying question, though. You know, we have, we're, I believe we are aligned with the memorandum from Pralis, Cohen, Crossco, and Esparza. There is one area, I think I know what you're asking us to do, it's item one A, but I just want to be clear. It talks about negotiating with First T as part of the operator selection. The way the sentence is written, I just want to be sure we're talking about the selected operator negotiating with them, not city staff negotiating with them, so if I can just have that clarification and then we're ready for any comments or questions.
Why don't we clarify as soon as we get back to council, because I know Councilor Esparza will be the first one out of the gate. So I'll ask her to clarify that right away. Let's go to the public, and then I think what we'll do is we'll break right after this item for dinner briefly. Okay, thanks, Tony.
Have Mark Luthman in person.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thanks for a few minutes to speak to you all today. My name's Mark Luthman. I live at one seven five five University Way here in San Jose. And in addition to being a city resident, I'm also the president of Touchstone Golf. We're a golf course management company that operates forty-one golf courses around the country and eleven here in Northern California. And with this, I compliment the staff and encourage you all to approve this submission of or accepting of RFPs for the long-term lease and management of the golf courses. If done right, and the city RFP considers and partners with the proper golf course management company, there is an opportunity to provide for needed investment in the golf courses to improve the golf course experience for city residents, an opportunity to manage the golf course and operate them in a way that they are true community assets for golfers and non-golfers, and also provide for financial stability of the golf courses, so they're no longer a drain on the city's general fund. So thank you once again. I encourage you to accept this proposal.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
No hands up on Zoom, so back to council.
All right, I think this is the first time in my fifteen and a half years that we've had a golf item without a hundred golfers lined up. So staff is obviously doing something right to keep golfers happy. All right, Councilmember Esparza.
Thank you. And actually, Mayor, I wanted to ask, the land use items that we have coming up, do we have lots of people thinking?
Yeah, that's a good question. We'll take a little straw pull and figure out whether we just plow through.
We'll see how fast we can go. All right.
All right, this will be government efficiency in motion.
All right, I'll be quick. So I am an unlikely golf advocate. Let's start there. I tried to golf once, and I just, I didn't get it, and it's not for me. But I am a passionate defender, as you know, of Los Lagos and a supporter of our golf courses. And for folks who are wondering why, you know, in District Seven anyway, it's really important to open space for the community. It's Riparian Corridor. I've gone out there with our local Audubon Society and looked at wildlife out there. I saw what happened after the floods when the golf course, you know, was part of that Riparian Corridor. It was important buffer before those floods got to Rock Springs. And so it's so much more than golf, you know, no offense to the golf folks, but it's so much more than golf for our community. And so, and I also, you know, we talked about efficiency and government. Here we have an opportunity to do something that we've been talking about. I was at some of those community meetings, I want to say it was two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, because I have a copy of some, a paper copy of some of those reports. I was at community meetings in twenty fourteen filled with hundreds of golfers. I spoke before the City Council myself, as well, with passionate community advocates, and really were at the point that the city has been working towards for many years, which is to be able to combine these contracts into one, talk about efficiency and government. And so we can have joint outcomes, joint goals, and joint accountability. And so I just wanted to give that brief background and then address First T. Thank you for bringing that up. It is so that the operator would then negotiate. And we include that with First T to give staff and the new operator the flexibility in negotiating an agreement that balances community benefit and course operation considerations, because, you know, taxpayers hold us accountable and we hold operators accountable for making those dollars stretch and for, you know, not being in the red, really. And so I know that First T has submitted specific requests as part of public comment, and I think it's important for an operator to have the ability to sit down with them and work through some of those issues directly. And so, you know, ensuring that our golf courses are serving and benefiting our communities has been at the heart of all of these discussions, the years of meetings, the years of outreach and engagement. And ultimately, we want to make sure that what the outcome is, is that it's greater community use. I know during COVID, I've been out at Los Lagos doing drive-through events. We had National Night Out outside, which we've actually had for a few years now. But they've had a large number of events, even during COVID. They have opened it up more and more to the community. You see the seniors and the moms with strollers out there going on their walks. And so, and so we want to make sure that this balance is really important. And so that's why we're asking that staff return to council with an update on this prior to the final execution of any agreement. And so I think, you know, with that, I can talk a lot, but Mayor, in the interest of brevity, I will just leave it there and move our memo.
Second.
All right, thank you. And John, I assume you got clarity?
I did. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Councilmember Foley?
I just want to say that I too am an unlikely advocate for golf. It's, I don't have a lot of patience, maybe you don't know that, but golf is one of those sports you really need a lot of patience, and I'm just not good at it. So, but I admire those who are, and I particularly admire the First T program. And I actually was getting ready to author my own memo about First T, but my council colleagues already had done that, so I really didn't need to. It makes perfect business sense to align all three golf courses under one management agreement. They are very unique. Each golf course has its own identity, its own personality, its own clientele. Rancho has First T, and I really am a strong advocate for First T for all that it does to bring new golfers into the program and to teach them about what it means to play a sport and work with others and learn. And it's a, it's a sport that does take a lot of patience and instills a lot of confidence in our kids as well. I know I've dropped children off, many of them, at First T when they were little so they could have their golf lessons, and they went on to be pretty gifted golfers in their later years. So it's exciting to see that growth and the confidence that comes from children who are exposed to a sport like that with a program as good as First T. So I'll actually just leave it at that. I'm very much support of the memo, very much support of the RFP request, and hope that the operator is able to negotiate a really good program with First T so that everybody thrives and expands and the program expands, and then at the end, our community benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pralis?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief as well. My colleagues have said it well and appreciate the memo that I was able to co-sign on with my colleagues there. I've had an opportunity to go out and experience the First T program and see the benefits, and honestly, was nervous that that opportunity may not be there for my children and was really something key for me that we ensured that we would include in this RFP to make it very explicit to our new operators. And thank you, Councilor Esparza, for clarifying there. For John, certainly something we want them to be able to negotiate and look forward to actually, you know, my son first, and then maybe my daughter as well, a couple of years later, being able to participate and experience golf. I know I first experienced it through my grandparents, and I too am not an avid golfer. It's not my sport of choice, but I have been able to enjoy all golf courses. I'm proud to now be the district representing San Jose Muni, and I have very fond memories with friends and family, being able to enjoy the golf courses for me as recreation. But I think more importantly, to expose our youth to many different sports and have this be an opportunity for them. First T allows that, so I'm looking forward to that. And I do think, Mayor, it speaks to the progress we've made with the decisions around our golf courses, the lack of really, I think, community input today. I think we are on the right path, and I'm excited about it and supporting the motion. Thanks.
Thank you. I first just want to say thanks to everyone for their hard work on this. My extensive knowledge of golf comes exclusively from watching the movie Caddyshack. And my skills have been compared to Gerald Ford's, but I, and the rare times when I'm out there. But I do appreciate that lots of folks enjoy these courses, which is great. I had a question. I know we've heard from a couple colleagues who've been very clear about the importance of having a single operator, but my understanding is there will be some flexibility if ultimately staff determines the best model is not to have a single operator. We'll have the ability to consider that. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. We are requiring operators to propose on all three, but they also may additionally propose on any individual one or two with separate proposals. And then we would look to match what's the best business model for the city.
Okay, that's great. I just want to make sure we all have options. I also appreciate that we've now paid off the debt, which is really important, I think, for us to have flexibility to do things we want to do, and particularly in operating these courses or if in some future generation they decided to be something else, then we can do that. I support the recommendations, my colleagues and the staff. I think, John, you know well about my hesitation, and it's one I know I've expressed publicly, which is that, you know, we're certainly seeing, I might consider to be good times in the golf industry, and that includes for public courses, but we've seen a downward slide for many, many years. As they often say, that, you know, the worst decisions that are made in any organization are made in the good times. That's when you really make decisions that can really wreck things down the road. And so I just want us to be really mindful of that, that, you know, obviously, this pandemic, as we hope it transitions to endemic, we may also affect behavior and we may not see a significant amount of increase of use relative to, say, twenty nineteen. And so I'm super concerned about anything that locks us in for too long. I appreciate, I think, as you've indicated us, to me and my team, that the intent is to have a no-cause termination in the agreements that would give the operator runway to wind down and pay down a pro-rated portion of capital. At some point, the council and the community decide a rancher should be soccer fields or something like that. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. That'll be one of the terms of the agreement.
Okay, great. So there's an opportunity to be able to pivot if what we realize is that this really is a very short-term surge in interest in golf, and we might be able to better serve our community in other ways, and I think it's important for us at least to have that option. I know we hear very clearly from our active and engaged golfing community, and that's a good thing. I commend them for that, and I commend the folks at First T and all those who've been very communicative with me and all my colleagues. But as we know, when we have these community engagement sessions, as we did, for example, with Los Lagos, everything is in how the question is asked. And we clearly heard from those who score golf, because there was a certain entitlement, sort of public entitlement, that people were worried about losing. And if the question is asked very differently of thousands of families that are struggling to be able to get their kids access to a soccer field, hey, there's an option. Should we consider this? I think you get a very different response, right? And I know you're aware of that. So I just want to make sure that we're not ignoring the opportunity that may be there for thousands more kids who may be be able to have access to an outdoor recreational entity like this, particularly since nine percent of our park space is currently dedicated to golf courses, and we all would love to have more park space. Okay, so let's, Councilmember Esparza, did you still have your hand up or was it?
No, sorry. I just put it down.
I think we have a motion then.
Mayor, I have my hand up.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Crossco?
I don't, I don't see anyone. Do you see anyone there from First T, sir? George or Victor?
Oh, George just walked in. Is that right? Okay. Yeah, he's here.
Because I have a few questions regarding First T. I don't want to take up a lot of time because I think we're ready to make a motion, but I do have a few questions regarding First T. I'm glad that, in general, the council's supportive of the program. I'm very supportive of the program. And they've been an incredible asset, especially in the district. But I do have some concerns as I look at the data, and I've expressed this also to Victor and to George. It's of no surprise, but as they sit there in the middle of the east side of San Jose at Rancho, which I think is an incredible asset, it does need a little bit of TLC. This is one of the facilities that I'm hoping city manager and staff will look into and see what we can do to improve the facilities. You know, my daughter, Abigail, who's ready to go on to college and leave me almost an empty nester. Thank goodness, I'm terming out, so you won't see that blubbering mess. But she took up golf. And, you know, I tried it. I didn't do well. She was a natural. It was difficult for her to be at Rancho because it did need some sprucing up. And, but she started off at First T, as did my other children. And it was a great introduction for her. And so I see the value in First T, as so do so many of the other children that I've had an opportunity to speak with and that we've had an opportunity to share time with. What I wanted to ask George, though, is, you know, Georgia, and we've talked about this. You know, for me, the value of it as well is making sure that we make First T accessible, especially because of the location, accessible to our residents in District Five. And when I look at the numbers, less than, less than a quarter of them are Latino. And yet we know that the majority of the residents in District Five especially are of Latino descent. Could you elaborate on that?
So that twenty-five percent is, I'm sorry, can you ask the question just one more time?
I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that we do have a diverse reflection in your participants. My concern is that as we look at the participants in your, in your program, Rancho being right smack in the middle of the east side of San Jose, in D five specifically, D five specifically where the majority of the residents are of Latino descent, you have less than twenty-five percent of the participants being Latino.
Sure. So our program is drawing from all Silicon Valley. And in the information that I provided, seventy percent of our participation at Rancho is San Jose residents, and about thirty percent are from D five. All of our outreach, whether it's in San Jose or elsewhere, is in schools. All of our outreach, whether it's in San Jose or elsewhere, is in schools that are Title One schools. So that's been our primary emphasis. But I would contend that one of the challenges that we faced. Is that working with operators, working with Parks and Rec. We need more help to reach the surrounding community. Our vision for Rancho is that it be a community golf center and not just a golf course. That there are other things that we can do if we all work together to reach the nearby community, the surrounding community. So we are completely on the same page with you, that we want to see greater participation from the east side. And so we just welcome the opportunity to expand our access and to work with Parks and Rec and the operators to do so.
And when you when you refer to a golf center versus a golf course, can you elaborate on that?
Sure. So just a golf course would suggest that the only thing that's occurring there is golf. A community center suggests that the community community can use the space for gatherings. Whether it's, you know, a farmer's market, whether it's different community groups having meetings there. That there are things that can go beyond just golf. And we also see making it more available to schools. For field trips, for outreach programs where we're bringing kids from schools to the golf course. A perfect example is on the fourteenth of May. Alamoak School District is holding their parent university there at Rancho. It's a perfect example of the way we want to see the golf course used beyond just golf.
Well, I love that idea, and that's about creating different partnerships. But how are you recruiting? You know, absent, absent, obviously PRNs. Or other partnerships coming in and doing. You know, health fairs or or farmers markets. What are you doing to to create those partnerships or to recruit? Participants. That that reflect the community. And that. Could could gravitate towards this sport?
Sure, well, one is the outreach that I mentioned to the schools. But it's also in our staffing, so we've increased our staffing to have more Latino representation and those who are bilingual. So I had a conversation with a former council member the other day, who was emphasizing the importance of working with mothers in particular. So it's an idea we hadn't quite heard of before. Although we do have. A mother on our staff, who's the parent of children in our program, who does work specifically with families. She's bilingual and she's helping recruit families to our program by focusing on the parents.
So.
And a lot of that council member is going to parent meetings, going to coffees at at schools. Going to after school programs and meeting with parents and recruiting that way.
Yeah. And are your former students participating in the recruitment efforts?
No, no, but it is, we're actually right about to start a. A council for the high school age participants. And an example is the one who's working in your office, who wants to be part of that committee to be doing local outreach.
Okay. So so it sounds like you're putting in place additional efforts. To increase the the participation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, and the expanded access that we're asking for. Helps us do that. Because so much of our efforts are limited. An example would be at Rancho del Pueblo on a Saturday, when we hold our programs. We're limited to just four of the twenty five range stalls. But we have hundreds of kids there on a Saturday. And so it limits our ability to invite others to maybe stop by Rancho. And have an opportunity to test out golf as part of our program.
But but that doesn't, but that doesn't limit your your outreach to Latinos, that doesn't limit your your recruitment of Latino children. And Latino families, you have to first get them in through the door before you can ask for expanded facilities. And that's what I'm asking for, I I want to see how these numbers are going to change. And that's what my concern is, you're in the middle, you're in the middle of the east side of San Jose, wherever you throw a stone, you're going to hit a Latino kid.
Yes.
And so and so before expanding facilities and and taking up a slot that could. Could bring bring in revenues to the PRNs, to the city, I I I'm I'm interested in first knowing what's the plan? And 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 I'm and I'm probably gonna, actually, I'm I'm probably gonna ask for friendly amendment when when. When when this comes back to council, I'm going to want a very detailed plan on what that recruitment effort is going to look like. What your marketing plan looks like and what your outreach looks like. Because I I'm I'm, I I think that your number should be much higher than than thirty percent. In Rancho, I don't know about Lagos, I don't know about Muni, but in Rancho. And Rancho alone, it should be much higher than thirty.
So I'm, we're more than happy to help prepare a plan.
Thank you, thanks, George, thank you so much, and and please feel free to use my office, we'd be more than happy to help you with that.
Okay, any other questions?
No, we're.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Crossco, do you have anything more?
No, I'm going to make a friendly amendment to the maker of the motion, I I'd like to see. As that, as that. Comes back to council with, what was it? The Bennett, the community benefits, that also there is a a detailed. Plan on outreach and recruitment included in that.
Okay, so that that would be a direction that staff would ask for a recruitment plan to come from First T, is that?
Yes, yes, please, yes.
Okay.
Point of clarification, Mayor, I think that the operator would be the ones to negotiate with First T. So perhaps what could come back to us would be what staff would outline in terms of community participation or community benefit. Because that is coming back to us.
Well, it is our intent to ask any any responsive bidder to outline their outreach and community benefit. And if we say to them, you have to incorporate First T as part of this, as is the direction in the in the memorandum from Prowl, Esco and Crossman Esparza. Then presumably that would happen as part of that process, so that we'd be able to articulate that, I don't know if you want to add to that, Avi?
Okay, so.
So are you saying that that, John, are you saying that that would already be part of that, that you would have already included that, or are you saying that you're?
Yeah, the, yeah, community benefit and outreach are all part of the intended RFP process to the operator to say, how are you going to do these things? How are you going to bring in the community around you? What kind of outreach are you going to, what kind of events are you going to plan? Much in much in the framework that we did at Los Lagos, which was actually becoming a pretty successful prior to the pandemic, before we could gather people. But they were doing a good job of programming other things other than golf and bringing the community in, it was pretty fun, movie nights and all kinds of stuff, so. We want more of that, we want to see more of that, and that will be part of the evaluation process in the RFP is who's who's providing a sound plan to do these things.
Okay, so I I guess what I want, when you look at the numbers here from First T that that they provided. And I'm specifically referring to Rancho, given the location. What I what I'd like to see is an increase, obviously, we're not going to know what the increase is in the moment as you're doing the outreach. But what I want to see is that the outreach is geared towards increasing the Latino representation. There should, that that number should be a lot higher than thirty percent, given the location of it.
Okay, so I guess the question, John, if I could maybe reframe is, do we need an amendment here, or is staff feel you're you already?
Yeah, I don't think so, I think we're going to get it either way, whether whether we initiate it earlier in the process, which I don't want to get too, I don't want to get ahead of the operator, you know.
Okay.
I want to be clear, you know, even though we're Parks and Recreation, we are not golf course operators, and we don't have that mental muscle. I would rather somebody who runs golf courses have that conversation and work out those business plans, they know how to do this, and they know how to make money doing this, so.
I'm not referring to the moneymaker piece of it, I'm referring to the participants and the diversity of the participants in. A program that's asking us for an expanded use of facility.
Yes, and I would think outreach plans would be a part of that, I would expect it to be.
Okay.
Okay, so I think I see folks nodding their heads suggesting that it's going to get baked into.
Okay.
The process.
I'm going to trust it, it's going to come back anyway, okay, so we'll see if it if it is or not.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, and George, thank you for your work in leading First T and all you do for many kids who participate and learn, okay. I think we've got a motion. Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Prowl?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes nine zero.
Okay, it's six forty, it looks like we're on the ten yard line here with two items left. My colleagues prefer just to plow through.
Let's do it.
All right, the motivated group, here we go. Chris, welcome. I'm going to call item eleven, I'm sorry, item ten point two. Administrative Appeal Hearing on the Initial Study Mitigated Negative DEC. The Site Development Permit for State Street Corporation Yard Project. We do have a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Robert.
Chris Burton, Director of Planning Building Code Enforcement, I'm joined this evening by Robert Manford. Deputy Director for Planning and David Kean, our Principal Planner for our secret team.
Can, sorry, Mayor, can I interrupt for one second?
Certainly.
I want to make a quick statement before we start. Yeah, although I submitted a memo on this item based on the planning commission information and other information that we knew about the application. I understand that this is an appeal, that the app, appellant applicant and public all have a right to comment, and I am committed to considering everything in the record before voting on this appeal. I have not made up my mind on the merits of the appeal or the application, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and that will assure he's not disqualified, is that right? Okay, all right, great.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So item ten point two is the appeal of a site development permit. And environmental appeal for the project at fourteen thirty six State Street, our file number references H two one dash oh four nine. I'd just like to orient you to where the project is, it's in the most northern part of the city, up in El Vizo. Located about midway along State Street, just north of the intersection with Essex Street. The site development permit is to allow a new corporation yard use. Also includes the reconfiguration of an existing vacant building, the addition of an outdoor materials storage area with a couple of tanks. And the construction of a small utility building and trash enclosure. The site development permit and the mitigated negative declaration were approved at director's hearing on December eighth. Of last year, since then, two appeals were filed, one. On the environmental determination on December tenth, and one on the site development permit on December fourteenth of last year. Staff is recommending denial on both the appeal of the environmental determination and denial of the appeal of the site development permit. The comments included in the environmental appeal don't raise new information that would result in new analysis, significant impacts. Or mitigation measures as compared to the analysis already disclosed in the the MND. And the comments included in the appeal of the site development permit don't negate any of the findings. And the proposed project continues to be consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan zoning district and city council policies. I believe we have the applicant available on the Zoom to speak to this.
Okay. And the appellant as well. Appellant, I think we have purely the appellant first, is that right? Okay. Let's go to the appellants. Or I guess, are they, we need two appellants, is that right?
There are two appellants on this.
Okay. Okay, all right, each appellant has five minutes to speak. So it doesn't have to speak for five minutes? Hello?
We can hear you?
Can you hear me?
Welcome.
Hello, this is Marcus Espinoza, El Vizo. I'm just acknowledging if people can hear me.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I I appealed this development project. I have many concerns about it, I have many concerns within that location of El Vizo. Everything off of State Street is light industrial. I like to, like to say that there is many open code violations along that street for the businesses. That have been. Open for several years with no, no resolution, no. No one from the city, code enforcement can do anything about it. And with this new project coming in, it's just added to the impacts that we're already experiencing. And I see that. There is really nothing. Commented about the students that wait at the bus stop about, I don't know, less than a hundred feet from this project. I don't think even the San Antonio Unified School District was noticed and given the opportunity to make any comments. Do any research or read any of your reports. So I think this project should not be approved, it should be, there should be a delay and. And maybe come back to it when there's more information, when the school has been. Noticed, when we find out more about the outcome of all the open complaints, while code violation complaints that are going on. Alongside State Street Light Industrial Zone. And that that's what is mainly concerned, and we got, you know, this project would just add more truck traffic to the El Vizo community. Again, a low income community, a community that has the burden of many, many industrial uses. You know, like you've got our dump here, you have the the water pollution plant, you have many. Large projects, large office building uses. And again, all the industrial uses along State Street with what that are like thirty feet away from residential homes. That are continue to be a nuisance, continue to be in code violations, and the city has done nothing about it. So I like, I would like you guys to delay and not approve this project and and and. And we can see what happens further if you guys can give us more information. This is, thank you, that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, sir, is the other appellant with us now?
What's the name of the other appellant?
The other appellant was Miguel Martinez, but I think there's another person with Marcus Espinoza's name on it, and I'm not sure if that's.
Yeah, I have two Marcos Espinozas, and both have their hands up, so I should let the other one speak as well?
Yeah, possibly, we can check this to make sure that that's the other appellant.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, council members, my name is Marcus Espinoza, and I am a resident of El Vizo, California. I find it funny and hypocritical that many of you talk about social injustice, inequality, and the impact of these issues. You say you all want to fix these issues, yet you still push polluting projects. push polluting projects in low-income communities, which are mainly minority communities, this project would never be allowed in any high-income communities in San Jose, Alviso is already burdened by many businesses that violate and pollute the community, currently, there are about five open cases with code enforcement that haven't been addressed in years, how can we hold these new business accountable if code enforcement can't hold existing businesses accountable in Alviso? We should protect Alviso and bring more environmental justice to this community, you should demand full environmental studies to protect Alviso's minorities, the current MND states that there are cancel risks with this project, their study also only accounts for eight-hour business days when this business is a 12-hour-a-day operation, please practice what you all preach and don't let this injustice happen to our community, thank you.
Okay, so my understanding is that the second Marcus was not the second appellate, I let him finish his comment, that will be his public comment, and I won't call on him again when we get to the other members of the public. Back to you guys.
Okay. So we got all the appellants who want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, and all the members of the public also?
Yeah, I mean, that was the only hand up.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, back to the council.
And, and just so you know, the applicant raised his hand again, I know he had two minutes left of his five, I'm not sure if we wanted to have him speak.
But that was the appellant?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Espinoza, did you have anything further?
Um, yes, so Marcus Espinoza is representing Manuel Martinez.
Oh, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Okay.
I, I thought, well, that's a remarkable coincidence, all right.
They all got their chances to speak then.
Yeah, okay, we've heard. Okay, so let's go to staff first.
Also, the applicant wants to speak too, they're Clay.
No, he was just letting us know that that second speaker actually was representing the other app, appellant.
Okay.
Other appellant, but the applicant, okay.
Okay, I, I think we could probably.
So that was the appellant, but the applicant, the proget applicant.
That was the appellant. That was the appellant, yeah, that's what I thought. I don't think we've heard from the applicant. We certainly can, but given the staff recommendation, they may be, oh, the, the applicant is here, okay, that's what the applicant looks like, right there. Okay, would you like to speak? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'll be very, very brief, my name's Clay LaSella, and I own the property on State Street, and I also own Pacific Surfacing, which is the parking lot maintenance company that, that we hope will be having State Street as its home going forward, I just wanted to very briefly let you know a little bit about us, we've been in Fremont for 30 years, we have been a conscientious and responsible neighbor to the community, and we have a high-end restaurant next door, a hotel across the street and high-density housing down the block, and in 30 years, there's never been a code violation or a complaint registered, we take it very seriously what the rules and regulations are in the community that we are part of, and we are proud to be a member where we help sponsor youth teams, and in Fremont, the Aloney College, every year, they do a drug awareness program that we help with, a radio station, we sponsor that as well, I understand the concerns of the appellants when it comes to code violation, and I actually agree, and we are anything but when it comes to that, that is why we have worked for three years and three months to acquire this permit, to do it the right way and follow the rules correctly. And so it is our intention to continue doing exactly what we've been doing for 30 years, which is to be law-abiding and be a valuable member of the community in Alviso, and we very much look forward to upgrading and enhancing the community, both with our yard, which will be state-of-the-art, and will have landscape and trees and be paved, which several of the properties on State Street are not, I understand that, but we're hoping to be part of what the future should hold for Alviso, and we would be very proud to be a member of it, thank you.
Okay, back to the council, is there a comment or a motion?
I'll move that we reject the appeal.
Second, that would be both appeals, is that right? We, we need to vote on both?
Okay, then I'll move that we reject both appeals.
Okay. Second. All right, motion is second, and I just wanted to say to the owners, I'm sorry that in the state of California, we have a secret process that takes this long and costs this much money to do a simple improvement on it, on a site, as, as you have, and appreciate your patience with this process. Okay, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Prowl?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
All right, thank you, and the final item for tonight is 10.3 administrative appeal hearing on the initial study mitigated negative deck for the Old Bay Shore Highway Industrial Project.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, again, as, as you noted, this is an appeal on the mitigated negative declaration for the 1660 Old Bay Shore Highway project, our reference file number is H20-4041, so again, just to give you that orientation, the project's located along Old Bay Shore Highway, it's just north of the 101-880 intercross, within one of our high concentrations of heavy industrial sites in North San Jose. The site development permit is for fairly minor additions and facade modifications to an existing 25,000-square-foot warehouse building with the addition of an almost 18,000-square-foot canopy and the repaving of the remainder of the site, the mitigated negative declaration was circulated to public comment on August 30th, and the site development permit and associated secret clearance were approved at planning director's hearing on November 17th of last year, since then, an appeal of the environmental determination was filed with the department on November 22nd of 2021. The appellant raised concerns regarding the cumulative impacts of warehouse distribution uses throughout the region, as well as broader concerns regarding transportation, air quality, and the inappropriate classification of the land use, staff is recommending denial of the, the appeal, we believe that the appellant has failed to provide substantial evidence in raising a fair argument under secret that the proposed project would result in significant adverse unmitigable impacts, in addition, none of the comments raised any new issues that would result in new or substantially greater impacts than disclosed in our secret clearance, and with that, I will end our comments and hand it over to the appellant.
And the name of the appellant?
Johnny Geigos.
Johnny, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilmen, women, my name is Johnny Geigos from the Teamsters Local 853, our local represents nearly 15,000 members and about 250 different companies, most of which are in the greater Bay, Bay Area, we, we represent workers in warehousing and distribution and related industries, as well as drivers dealing with package deliveries, our members not only work in this industry, but live in the neighborhoods and communities often directly impacted by it, this is why our union has joined in the partnerships with communities and organizations to address the impacts of logistics on the Bay Area, that focus is how we became engaged in the 1660 Old Bay Shore Road Logistics Center Project, at the time of the planning director hearing last November, we identified and had concerns about potentially unknown environmental impacts of the project involving traffic and emissions, and the bigger picture logistical systems in our communities, while we were not opposed to the project in principle, we felt the additional analysis was needed to give the public a better understanding of long-term and secondary impacts of warehouse development, so we appealed the direction decision to approve the project without conducting a deeper environmental review, since that time, we have talked with the applicant regarding the project, based on our understanding of the building modifications, our concerns about the implication, implications particularly for the VMC thresholds and unknown impacts have been addressed, we would like to thank the applicant and city staff for working with the community and resolving these concerns, we would encourage the city to acknowledge the applicant's cooperation in resolving our primary concerns, which form the basis of this appeal, thank you for your time.
I believe the applicant is online, it's either Mark Hampton or Bill Rose from Prologis.
Yes, it is, good evening, everyone, I'm not sure, can you, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, good evening, and thank you, City Council and staff for all the work on this, we are encouraged by logistics and by working with the city in San Jose, and as a longtime owner of property in the area, we've worked with the staff and the city on many occasions, and we appreciate the hard work on this particular project, as well as communications that we've had with the Teamsters as well, we are in agreement on the recommendation of staff and look forward to completing the project as designed, and willing and ready to answer any questions.
Okay.
And I move approval, Mayor, Councilmember Cross.
Thank you, Councilmember Cross.
Second.
All right, any other comments, questions, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Prowl?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, so it's time for open forum, Stacy, would you like to say anything? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom?
I have no hands up.
Okay, in that case, then it means adjourn, thanks, everybody. Stacy, how's your chance?